...consideration of Agenda Item Five entitled, and I quote,[6.12][7.64]"Illegal Israeli actions in occupied East Jerusalem and the rest of the occupied Palestinian territory." Before proceeding further, members are reminded that at its fifty-fourth plenary meeting of the tenth emergency session yesterday, the assembly decided that the debate on Agenda Item Five would be suspended at eleven AM today to proceed to the consideration of draft resolution A/ES ten slash L thirty-one, revision one, and that the debate would continue after the action on the draft resolution. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Arab Emirates.
Monsieur le président, dans le début, je vous remercie de votre nomination pour la direction de l'Agence nationale de l'Amérique en 2019. J'ai accepté cette élection d'ici 2019. Je remercie Dennis Francis pour sa direction formidable pour les actions précédentes. J'ajoute aussi la parole qui a été prononcée par les membres de l'Équipe internationale de l'Arabie et des membres de l'Organisation de l'Échange Islamique et de la lutte contre l'impôt. La France a invité l'Imaïrats à l'apprentissage de la décision de la loi internationale de 19 décembre dernier pour qu'il y ait des conséquences légales sur les politiques israéliennes sur la terre palestinienne occupée et qui constituent des plans essentiels dans le processus de justice palestinien. Je suis convaincu de l'intervention israélienne dans le cadre de la loi internationale. J'ai participé avec plusieurs pays et autres organisations internationales à des opérations de décision de la loi internationale. Je suis convaincu que l'attaque israélienne n'est pas légale et je dois la finir. C'est le point qui a fait rire l'opinion collective de la communauté internationale. Aujourd'hui, la France soutient le projet de décision préparé par l'Imaïrats qui se base sur la décision de la loi internationale et qui précise le chemin définitif pour les personnes qui souhaitent l'arrêt de l'attaque en 12 mois et arrêter leur action statituelle et la pratique qui s'est terminée comme la situation historique qui se trouve dans le paradis du Père et du Fils. Nous sommes arrivés à un point d'importance pour la décision de la loi internationale puisque nous sommes convaincus de l'importance de l'assumé de l'Amour pour traduire cette décision à des mesures pratiques. Monsieur le président, cette assesee est interdite après une longue période où les gens se sont battus contre la guerre qui a commencé à Gaza. Nous sommes là pour témoigner d'une douleur humaine non prédit dans nos débuts. Plus de 41 000 personnes de la ville sont mortes. La plupart des habitants de la ville sont morts. Dans ce contexte, la France confirme que deux choses sont importantes. Tout d'abord, il faut mettre fin à la violence en Gaza et garantir la mise en place des aides humaines à tous ceux qui en ont besoin et de l'écart des gens en danger. Il faut adopter des décisions de l'Assemblée de l'Amour, dont les décisions de 2735, 2728, 2720 et 2712. Dans ce cadre, nous nous opposons à notre capacité à agir avec la base que font le Monde et les États-Unis. Deuxièmement, il faut mettre fin à la situation médicale qui se passe à Gaza. La maladie des enfants est révélée depuis 25 ans. On est en train de prendre des mesures précaires pour arrêter la santé. Dans ce contexte, la France a soutenu la résolution de 11 septembre 2022 pour le plus grand nombre de soins médicaux à Gaza depuis le début de la guerre. En relation avec l'Organisation de la Santé mondiale. Nous avons également soutenu la mission de l'accord contre la maladie des enfants pour plus de 640 000 enfants à Gaza. Troisièmement, il faut arrêter toutes les actions statituelles de la région dont le Père et le Fils sont concernés, ainsi que la situation militaire israélienne et les hostiles. Il faut garder compte de la situation historique, légale et la situation de la Bible. Quatrièmement, il faut faire attention au fait de lutter contre la guerre grâce à l'endettement de la sécurité de la paix qui va atteindre la solution des deux pays et l'assumé de la religion palestinienne du Père et du Fils comme le seul chemin vers la paix et la paix juste et la solidarité dans le territoire. Dans ce cadre, la France invite la France à commencer la semaine dernière par la gestion des droits et des droits supplémentaires de la République des Nations Unies. Nous sommes nombreux à ce jour-là à voir l'ensemble de ces organisations. La France invite aussi les conférences de l'Amérique aux pays palestiniens et les autres pays à adopter des mesures pratiques. Au bout, le président dit que la population palestinienne est longtemps assise contre l'attaque. Nous avons besoin de temps pour finir ces affaires et les préparer à un avenir à la fois certain et à la fois certain comme les autres pays du monde. Merci, monsieur le président.
Je remercie le représentant distingué de l'Unione Arab Emirates. Je donne maintenant le droit à la représentante distinguée de Senegal.
Monsieur le Président, en entamant mon propos, je voudrais vous féliciter pour votre élection à la tête de l'Auguste Assemblée Générale des Nations Unies et vous exprimer l'engagement du Senegal à vous apporter sa solidarité et son soutien pour la réussite de votre mandat. Le Senegal souscrit aux déclarations prononcées par le Cameroun et l'Uganda respectivement au nom de l'Organisation de coopération islamique et du mouvement de non alignés. Ceci dit, je voudrais me réjouir que l'Assemblée Générale a réparé une injustice historique en permettant à l'État de Palestine de pouvoir siéger à nos côtés. Aussi, je voudrais de nouveau inviter les États membres qui ne l'ont pas encore fait à reconnaître la Palestine et accompagner ses efforts pour devenir un État membre de plein droit. Ma délégation s'incline pieusement devant la mémoire des dizaines de milliers de Palestiniens, des centaines de personnels humanitaires, des dizaines de reporters et journalistes tués en Palestine par les attaques répétées et continues de la puissance occupante. Monsieur le Président, il faut encore le rappeler. La population de Gaza vit depuis onze mois une véritable punition collective qui aura causé la mort de plus de quarante-huit mille personnes, en majorité des femmes et des enfants, en plus de semer maladies, famine et destruction. Sous ce rapport, ma délégation exprime sa grave préoccupation. Quant au récent rapport de Madame Francesca Albanis, rapporteuse spéciale des Nations Unies sur les territoires palestiniens occupés, qui conclut, je cite : "Il existe des motifs raisonnables de croire que le CI indiquant qu'Israël a commis un génocide", et à la fin de la citation. Pour un peuple qui n'aspire qu'à vivre librement et souverainement sur sa terre, cette situation doit cesser. C'est ce que notre humanité commande et c'est ce que le droit exige. Monsieur le Président, à ce dernier égard, ma délégation voudrait saluer la vie de la Cour Internationale de Justice du 19 juillet 2024 sur les conséquences juridiques découlant de la politique et des pratiques d'Israël dans les territoires palestiniens occupés, y compris Jérusalem-Est, et de l'illégalité de la présence continue d'Israël dans les territoires palestiniens occupés. Cet avis confirme ce que nul n'ignore : c'est l'illégalité d'une occupation et la violation des droits inaliénables du peuple palestinien. Les Palestiniens ont le droit de vivre dans un état indépendant, d'un seul tenant viable et souverain avec Jérusalem-Est pour capitale. Monsieur le Président, hors de la situation actuelle à Gaza, qui demande la cessation des hostilités et une solidarité sans faille, la communauté internationale reste confrontée à cette lancinante question. Quand et comment rendre justice au peuple palestinien ? À travers ce projet de résolution, l'occasion nous est donnée à chacun de nos États de poser un pas de plus dans cette direction. C'est en cela que, dans le paragraphe G de son avis, la Cour recommande à notre organisation, en particulier l'Assemblée Générale et le Conseil de Sécurité, je cite, "d'examiner les modalités précises et les nouvelles mesures nécessaires pour mettre fin le plus rapidement possible à la présence illégale d'Israël dans les territoires palestiniens occupés", à la fin de la citation. C'est pourquoi le Senegal a coparlé né ce projet de résolution et espère qu'il sera adopté par une large majorité. Monsieur le Président, pour conclure, ma délégation réitère son appel à un cessé le feu immédiat et durable, à un accès humanitaire complet, sûr et sans entraves dans la bande de Gaza, ainsi qu'à la mise en œuvre de résolutions pertinentes du Conseil de Sécurité et de mesures conservatoires édictées par la Cour Internationale de Justice. C'est à travers ces efforts conjugués que nous pourrons mettre un terme à la catastrophe humanitaire en cours à Gaza. Au nom de la solidarité internationale, nous devons tous puiser au fond de notre humanité pour faire renaître l'espoir d'une paix durable entre Israël et la Palestine. Il s'agit là de la garantie ultime de sécurité pour tous. Je vous remercie.
Je remercie le représentant distingué de Senegal. Je donne maintenant le droit à la représentante distinguée de Timor-Leste.
Merci, monsieur le Président, pour convenir cette session spéciale d'urgence. Ma délégation vous félicite pour votre élection en tant que président de l'Assemblée générale pour sa soixante-neufième session. Monsieur le Président et excellences, Timor-Leste, une nation née d'une longue lutte pour la seules détermination et la souveraineté, reste engagée à la justice, la paix et les droits de tous les peuples. Notre expérience raciste, de la colonialisme, de l'occupation externe et de la quête de l'identité nationale informe notre perspective sur le conflit israélien-palestinien. Cette déclaration doit être comprise dans le contexte des droits de la Palestine de statut. Ma délégation respecte le droit de se défendre tous les États membres de la Nation Unie, y compris Israël. Comme une nation qui face des challenges similaires, nous défendons fermement pour la protection des droits humains et pour des résolutions pacies aux disputes internationales. Notre position sur ce sujet est basée sur le principe de la souveraineté, l'égalité et la loi internationale. Compris le contexte historique, nous reconnaissons la décennie longue de la endurance de la population palestinienne à l'endroit de l'occupation, de la displacement et des violations des droits fondamentaux. Notre engagement pour la seules détermination nous empêche de s'asseoir en solidarité avec le peuple palestinien et leur aspiration pour un état indépendant. La loi internationale, en particulier les résolutions de l'ONU, soutient les droits et les condamnations palestiniennes à des settlements illégals et à des actions dans les territoires occupés. Timor-Leste croit que ces settlements altèrent leur équilibre démographique et détruisent la solution de deux états. Les actions dans Jérusalem, en particulier celles qui altèrent le score de status quo de folies, soulignent les tensions et soulignent les préoccasions des droits humains et de la occupation. Comme membre de l'ONU, Timor-Leste encourage l'action collective pour assurer que les voix des communautés opprimées sont entendues. Le peuple palestinien doit avoir non seulement de la sympathie, mais aussi de réponses internationales concrètes qui maintiennent la justice et la dignité humaine. Nous maintenons que le dialogue et la diplomatie doivent preceder les actions unilaterales. Notre gouvernement affirme la solidarité internationale avec les peuples opprimés, en créant des parallèles entre notre lutte pour l'indépendance et la quête palestinienne de statut. Nous défendons la reconnaissance de la Palestine comme un état souverain, ce qui est essentiel pour accorder les droits de la Palestine et pour fomenter une discussion significative. Soutenant la résolution de l'Assemblée générale de la Nation Unie, 67/19, qui reconnait la Palestine comme une non-membre observée, affirme notre reconnaissance de la souveraineté et de la seules détermination palestinienne. Timor-Leste souligne la protection de la population civile dans les zones de conflit. Le souffrance palestinienne due aux actions militaires et la blocage humanitaire de Gaza garantissent une attention urgente. Nous sommes fermement contre la violence et appelons à l'avance des crimes de guerre. La position nationale de Timor-Leste est claire. Nous cherchons la justice et la paix basées sur la loi internationale, les droits humains et la seules détermination. Notre soutien pour le cause palestinienne est inévitable. Motivés par notre partage historique et notre engagement pour un monde juste, guidés par ces valeurs, nous voterons en faveur de la résolution draft présente aujourd'hui. Notre vote représente un appel pour un nouveau dialogue et de la diplomatie. Nous croyons que la coexistence pacifique entre Israéliens et Palestiniens n'est pas seulement possible, mais imperative. En soutenant la résolution, nous défendons un avenir où les deux peuples peuvent vivre avec dignité, sécurité et respect mutuel. Le vote en faveur de la résolution porte notre engagement sur le principe de la justice et des droits humains. Ça reflète notre lutte historique et notre honte à un monde où toutes les nations et les peuples peuvent exercer leurs droits librement. Nous sommes fidèles à ceux qui cherchent la paix et c'est notre responsabilité de contribuer à une résolution juste pour le peuple palestinien. Nous affirmons notre engagement pour une communauté globale équitable et équitable. Je vous remercie.
Je remercie le représentant distingué de Timor-Leste. Je donne maintenant le droit à la représentante distinguée de Djibouti.
Monsieur le Président, de prime abord, je voudrais vous réitérer au nom de la République de Djibouti, mais chaleureuse félicitation pour votre brillante élection en tant que président de la soixante-neuvième session de l'Assemblée générale. Djibouti s'aligne sur les déclarations faites par l'OIC, l'Arab Group et le NAM. La résolution actuelle est un test pour les membres de la Nation Unie. Elle teste si nous croyons vraiment ce que nous disons quand nous appelons le respect du règne de la loi. Elle teste si nous sommes vraiment engagés à une solution pacifique au conflit israélien-palestinien basée sur la loi internationale, comme les résolutions précédentes nous ont stupéfait. Elle teste si nous sommes prêts à soutenir la solution de deux états entre Israël et Palestine, deux états souverains et indépendants vivant side par side en paix et en sécurité. Elle teste si nous sommes sincères en déclarant notre engagement pour le droit du peuple palestinien à la seules détermination. Si nous sommes vraiment engagés à ces objectifs, tous lesquels sont reflétés dans de nombreuses résolutions précédentes adoptées par l'Assemblée et par le Conseil de sécurité, alors nous devons voter en faveur de la résolution actuelle et l'approuver par une majorité énorme. La opinion consultative issue par la Cour de justice internationale constitue une déclaration autoritaire de la loi internationale par la plus haute autorité au niveau mondial et la plus respectée sur la loi internationale. Ça demande notre respect et ça demande notre soutien. La résolution devant nous est le véhicule approprié pour notre expression de ce soutien. Le texte de la résolution écho le langage de la Cour et est entièrement cohérent avec elle. Tout dans cette résolution reflète les résultats de la Cour qui ont été déposés dans la opinion consultative. Cette opinion n'a pas semblé si spontanée. Elle a été demandée par l'Assemblée générale en décembre 2022. C'est la réponse de la Cour aux questions spécifiques auxquelles l'Assemblée générale a référé. Après avoir considéré les submissions écrites et orales de plus de cinquante États et organisations internationales et reviewing l'évidence volumineuse soumise par la Secrétariat général et les États participant, la Cour nous a donné ses réponses à nos questions qui constituent maintenant des décisions autoritatives sur la loi internationale. Ces décisions établissent avec la force de la loi internationale les droits du peuple palestinien, les obligations légales sur le statut d'Israël, les obligations légales sur tous les États avec lesquels tous les États se sont engagés à la règle de la loi doivent s'appliquer et les obligations légales sur la Nation Unie elle-même. Après avoir demandé à la Cour sa opinion et en l'avant d'en recevoir, elle appelle tous les États membres à respecter et appliquer les obligations qui sont maintenant sur nous. Monsieur le Président, la Secrétariat général, dans son rapport du 25 octobre 2023, a expressément lié le croître et l'expansion des settlements israéliens à l'acquisition permanente de territoires palestiniens. Les faits sont indiscutables. Sous l'ombre de cette longue occupation militaire, Israël a été stade en annexant les territoires palestiniens occupés et continue à le faire. Son objectif déclaré est l'acquisition permanente de ces territoires et l'exercice de souveraineté sur eux en défense de la prohibition de l'acquisition de territoires par force, une norme peremptoire de la loi internationale. Dans les paroles de l'Union africaine, la prolongue occupation israélienne des territoires palestiniens est en elle-même un tort. Ça qualifie comme un acte internationalement wrongful d'un caractère continu. Les politiques et pratiques associées à ça remontent à la facture et juridique à l'accession des territoires palestiniens qui violent la prohibition de l'acquisition de territoires par force. C'est pourquoi la opinion de la Cour est si critique et si urgente. Elle établit très clairement que la solution de deux états qui est si vive pour les besoins de tous les peuples requiert que l'obstacle principal de cette solution, l'occupation israélienne infinie de Palestine, soit finie. C'est pourquoi la Cour a décidé, dans les termes les plus clairs possibles, que la loi internationale demande que cette occupation illégale soit terminée le plus rapidement possible. Les modalités, comme la Cour les a établies dans des termes équally clairs, sont pour l'Assemblée générale ainsi que pour le Conseil de sécurité à mettre en œuvre. La résolution actuelle est le véhicule pour mettre en œuvre la décision de la Cour. C'est, comme je l'ai dit avant, un test de notre engagement pour le règne de la loi. Djibouti encourage fortement tous les États membres à le soutenir. Merci, monsieur le Président.
Je remercie le représentant distingué de Djibouti. Je donne maintenant le droit à la représentante distinguée de Bangladesh.
Monsieur le Président, je vous remercie pour convenir cette ressource d'urgence spéciale de l'Assemblée générale dans le contexte de la guerre génocidaire qui est perpetrated contre les populations civiles impolites en Gaza et de la opinion consultative historique de la Cour de justice du 19 juillet 2024 soumise à la demande de cette Assemblée générale et déclarant l'occupation israélienne dans les territoires palestiniens occupés illégale. Bangladesh s'aligne sur les déclarations données par le Cameroun et l'Uganda en behalf de l'Organisation de coopération islamique et du mouvement non aligné, respectivement. Monsieur le Président, les atrocités en cours en Gaza contre les civils et les Palestiniens ont déjà causé plus de 41 000 morts, y compris plus de 14 000 enfants et plus de 11 000 femmes. Et c'est un undercount, puisque la plupart des Palestiniens perdus, plus de 10 000, sont croyés être enterrés sous les tombeaux. Plus de 100 000 personnes ont été endurées avec 1,9 millions de personnes déplacées vivant dans des conditions humaines. Malheureusement, malgré les résolutions passées dans le Conseil de sécurité de l'ONU et l'Assemblée générale, cette population civile assommée par la menace de la terreur continue à être abattue devant les yeux noirs de tout le monde. Une incendie immédiat, comme stipulé dans la résolution du Conseil de sécurité du 27-28 au 25 mars 2024, ne reste pas allucinant jusqu'à présent. Nous avons aussi vu des centaines de morts dans la Baie Ouest occupée depuis le 7 octobre. Ce ne sont pas seulement graves violations des droits humains, mais aussi grosses violations de toutes les lois humanitaires internationales, y compris celles sur la protection des civils. Ces tuements indiscriminés de civils ne peuvent pas être acceptés par un standard. La communauté internationale doit agir et doit apporter un terme à ces graves crimes contre l'humanité. Les perpetrators doivent être responsables. Ils doivent être responsables. Nous acceptons le verdict historique de l'ICG du 19 juillet 2024 et appelons Israël à adhérer à cela. L'occupation illégale des terres palestiniennes doit finir dans un cadre spécifique. Le Conseil de sécurité de l'ONU devrait immédiatement recommander une membership complète du statut de Palestine aux Nations Unies. En tant qu'effort immédiat pour mettre en œuvre la opinion consultative historique de l'ICJ, nous demandons que Israël arrête ses opérations militaires en Gaza et en Baie Ouest et retire ses troupes de Gaza et accorde un incendie inconditionnel. Israël doit aussi arrêter de construire de nouveaux settlements illégaux et doit démanteler tous les settlements existants et évacuer tous les terres palestiniennes. Les Nations Unies et leurs États membres doivent prendre toutes les mesures pour établir la souveraineté palestinienne dans toutes les terres palestiniennes avant les frontières de 1967. Nous devons presser Israël à finir son apathique comme l'occupation coloniale illégale des territoires palestiniens. Israël doit être obligé de fournir des réparations aux victimes palestiniennes en partie de leur compliance avec les directives de l'ICJ. Monsieur le Président, la opinion consultative de l'ICJ est en effet une édition importante dans leurs efforts pour clarifier le non-approbation légale du régime international des actes illégals d'occupation dans les territoires palestiniens occupés. En addition à de nombreuses résolutions du Conseil de sécurité de l'ONU et de l'Assemblée générale. Nous devons maintenir le verdict de l'ICJ et nous devons prendre des mesures collectives tangibles pour finir la misérable misère de plus de sept décennies du peuple palestinien. Nous apprécions aussi les indictes de la Cour internationale relative à la guerre en Gaza dans le midst de formidableurs défis. La communauté internationale doit se tenir à côté de l'ICJ dans ce sens. Nous croyons que pour les perpetrators de crimes massifs, il est important que leur responsabilité soit assurée. Nous espérons que tous les segments du système de l'ONU coopérer dans ce sens. Nous apprécions les Secrétariens et les droits humains de l'ONU. We appreciate the Secretary-General's and the UN Human Rights High Commissioner's statements so far about the abysmal humanitarian and human rights situation in Gaza and would expect that all member states would address the grave situation without any double standard. Mr. President, the draft resolution AES 10/L31 Rev. 1 of this emergency session, special session, calls for the implementation of the ICJ verdict, and the United Nations system and its member states need to undertake all necessary measures to that end. The adoption of this resolution today, in our view, would be another important step towards outlining the legal consequences of Israel if it does not agree to end its occupation. Bangladesh has co-sponsored the draft resolution, and we call upon all member states to vote in favor of the draft resolution. In conclusion, Mr. President, while we are discussing watershed outcome documents like the Pact of the Future, Declaration for the Future Generation, and Global Digital Compact, which are to be adopted in this month, this is regrettable that the international community is still watching such mass atrocities to continue in Gaza in particular and such illegal repressive occupation of Palestinian lands in general. This cannot continue any longer. Therefore, we demand actions so that our Palestinian brothers and sisters get rid of the scourge of occupation and atrocities soon and can be able to live peacefully as an independent nation. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bangladesh. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Republic of Tanzania.
Mr. President, the United Republic of Tanzania wish to congratulate you and the Vice Presidents for your well-deserved election as the President of 79th Session of the General Assembly, and wish to assure you, my delegation, full support and cooperation as you discharge your noble duties. My delegation associate itself with the statement delivered by the Non-Aligned Movement. However, we wish to complement it with the following remarks. Mr. President, as we gathered here today to decide on the legality of the Israel occupation of Palestinian territory, the entire territory of the Gaza Strip is under full military control of Israel Defense Force. Situation in Palestine is worsening, whereby the number of civilian death and injuries are drastically increasing. Gaza is on the dire of humanitarian situation. Destruction of housing and key infrastructure is critical, and humanitarian access remains severe constrained. According to the Senior Humanitarian and Reconstruction Coordinator for Gaza Secret CAG, the number of injured is now ninety-three thousand, which is among the highest in the recent time, and the death toll since October 2023 has risen to more than forty-one thousand. Under the situation, there is a justification and urgent need for a General Assembly and Security Council to make a necessary intervention to stop further human suffering in the Palestinian territory. It is in the longstanding position of the United Republic of Tanzania to oppose any form of colonialism or act of one state illegally occupy another country's territory. For this reason, we categorically oppose illegal Israel actions in the occupied East Jerusalem and the rest of the occupied Palestinian territory. In addition, Tanzania support the advisory opinion of the International Court of Justice, ICJ, on the legal consequence arising from the policies and practices of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. Furthermore, my delegation will vote in favor of draft resolution advisory, I quote, advisory opinion of the International Court of Justice on the legal consequences arising from Israel policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem and from the illegality of Israel's continual presence in the occupied Palestinian territory submitted by the State of Palestine. Mr. President, in conclusion, Tanzania reiterate it is a historical and principled commitment to the realization of the ultimate goal of two-state solution, with Israel and Palestine living peacefully side by side. Let us work together to achieve a lasting peace in the Middle East, where all nations and people can live in dignity and freedom, so that the whole world can enjoy peace and tranquility. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Republic of Tanzania. I now give the floor to the distinguished representatives of Maldives.
I thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I thank for resuming the 10th Emergency Special Session at a defining moment for international law. The International Court of Justice has spoken clearly. Israel's actions constitute a violation of international law. Now it is our responsibility to respond with decisive actions. The suffering of the Palestinian people did not begin last year. It did not begin with the building of the wall. It did not begin with the events of October 7. For nearly eight decades, the Palestinian people have endured the harsh realities of occupation, apartheid, and oppression. Mr. President, during the proceedings of the case with the ICJ, the Maldives had submitted both written and oral statements in support of Palestine. That is because we stand on the side of justice and we stand for upholding the rule of law. The resolution before us today is simple and direct. It calls for Israel to withdraw its forces from the occupied Palestinian territories. It demands an end to Israel's illegal policies and practices. But it is not just a call to Israel. It is a call to all of us. It demands that member states act. We must not turn a blind eye to those violations. It is time that the United Nations impose sanctions, including an arms embargo on Israel. This is not a symbolic gesture. It is an important step to prevent further violations and hold Israel accountable. The world should not and cannot legitimize Israel's unlawful occupation. No law-abiding nation should. We must also stop any form of aid that supports or sustains the occupation. This is not a matter of political preference. It is an obligation under international law. If we fail to act, we undermine the very principles of justice, equality upon which this institution is built. The credibility of the UN and the rule of law are at stake. This is why the Maldives fully supports the call for reparations from Israel. The damage inflicted on Palestine must be acknowledged and the harms must be recorded. Reparations are not just about financial compensation. They are about justice. They recognize the longstanding suffering endured by the Palestinian people and the need for accountability. Mr. President, the starting point for an enduring solution to the Middle East must be granting of full membership of the United Nations to the State of Palestine. This is not only a fundamental element of a lasting solution, it is also a moral imperative. Israel must recognize and respect the sovereignty and independence of Palestine on the lands that Israel has occupied since 1967, with East Jerusalem as Palestine's capital. Israel must allow the safe return and resettlement of hundreds of thousands of Palestinians who were forcibly driven out of their homes. This is not a matter of legality, it's a matter of humanity too. The right to return is essential to achieving justice and lasting peace in the region. We also call on the International Criminal Court to act swiftly. The ICC must issue, must issue, the arrest warrants issued on Israeli officials requested by the prosecutor in May this year. Israel's actions, including genocide, war crimes, and crimes against humanity, must not go unpunished. ICC must ensure that impunity does not prevail and justice is served. We call on all member states to take their obligations seriously. We must refuse any form of military, financial, or material support that enables Israel's illegal actions. This is not time for evasion or delay. This is the time to draw strength from our collective humanity to honor our legal and moral obligations. The Maldives remains steadfast in its commitment to justice for Palestine. What needs to be done is here before us in this resolution. To realize it, we must resolve to act collectively with humanity in front and center to safeguard the future of the Palestine and Palestinian people. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Maldives. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Spain.
Señor presidente, la situación de Gaza es un drama humano y humanitario que sigue desarrollándose casi un año después de los terribles atentados terroristas que jamás perpetró contra Israel el pasado 7 de octubre, que hemos condenado repetidamente. España sigue exigiendo un acuerdo para un alto al fuego inmediato que permita la entrada masiva y sin trabas a la ayuda humanitaria en Gaza. La liberación inmediata de todos los rehenes israelíes de acuerdo con las resoluciones del Consejo de Seguridad. Apoyamos el trabajo de mediación de Estados Unidos, Qatar y Egipto e insistimos a las partes para que cese la violencia. Condenamos los recientes ataques contra trabajadores humanitarios en Gaza, incluyendo contra la escuela de Unrua en Nusairat la semana pasada, y recordamos la obligación que establece el derecho internacional humanitario de proteger a los trabajadores humanitarios. Las medidas provisionales exigidas por la Corte Internacional de Justicia siguen sin cumplirse. Desde el 10 de septiembre, la Misión Observadora de Palestina ocupa el puesto que le corresponde alfabéticamente en esta sala. Un paso que va más allá de lo simbólico, puesto que significa un avance hacia el objetivo de la membresía de Pleno Derecho, que España apoyó en votación de esta Asamblea General el pasado 10 de mayo, y que se trasladó en el Pleno Nacional al reconocimiento por España del Estado de Palestina el pasado 28 de mayo. Señor presidente, la Corte Internacional de Justicia se pronunció en su dictamen consultivo el pasado día 19 de julio contra las consecuencias legales de la ocupación de Palestina y estableció claramente que la ocupación del territorio palestino es ilegal y debe terminar lo antes posible. También estableció la obligación de Israel de cesar toda su actividad colonizadora y evacuar a los colonos del territorio palestino, reparando los daños causados. Asimismo, estableció la obligación de todos los Estados de no reconocer la situación actual y no facilitar la ocupación. La Corte determina que el Consejo de Seguridad y muy especialmente esta Asamblea General deben precisar las acciones necesarias para terminar lo antes posible con la ocupación. Con ese ánimo, España apoya y copatrocinan el proyecto de resolución sobre el dictamen consultivo de la Corte Internacional de Justicia, que se ha presentado a esta Asamblea General, y saluda la disposición de la Misión de Observación Permanente de Palestina para introducir e incorporar sugerencias y comentarios al borrador. Esta resolución debe marcar un hito en la aplicación de la solución de los dos Estados, que es la única vía hacia la paz, y debe tener su reflejo en la actuación de todos los órganos de las Naciones Unidas y de los miembros de la comunidad internacional. Es una resolución que muestra nuestro compromiso con la paz y la seguridad internacionales, pero también nuestra firme defensa del ordenamiento internacional y nuestra coherencia a la hora de exigir el fin del uso de la fuerza en las relaciones con los miembros de la comunidad internacional. Muchas gracias, señor presidente.
I thank the distinguished representative of Spain. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Sierra Leone.
Mr. President, Sierra Leone aligns this statement with the statements delivered by the representatives of Cameroon on behalf of the Organization of Islamic Cooperation and Uganda on behalf of the Non-Aligned Movement. Sierra Leone further thanks the State of Palestine for the historic introduction of draft resolution AES 10/L31, and states without equivocation that will support and will vote in favor of the resolution. And this is why, by resolution AES 77/247, adopted on 30th December 2022, the General Assembly requested an advisory opinion from the International Court of Justice, pos one to Article 65 of the Statute of the Court, on the questions regarding, and I quote, "the legal consequences arising from the ongoing violation by Israel of the right of Palestinian people to self-determination, from its prolonged occupation, settlement, and annexation of the Palestinian territory occupied since 1967, and how do the policies and practices of Israel referred to affect the legal status of the occupation, and what are the legal consequences that arises for all states and the United Nations?" End of quote. The ICJ, the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, the Wallace Court, on 19th July 2024, duly obliged by responding to the questions posed by the General Assembly through its advisory opinion, with its clear and unambiguous opinion that inter alia, and I quote, "that the State of Israel's continued presence in the occupied Palestinian territory is unlawful. The State of Israel is under obligation to bring to an end its unlawful presence in the occupied Palestinian territory as rapidly as possible. That the State of Israel is under obligation to cease immediately all new settlement activities and to evacuate all settlers from the occupied Palestinian territory. That the State of Israel has the obligation to make reparations for damage caused to all the natural or legal persons concerned in the occupied Palestinian territory." End of quote. Mr. President, the ICJ in its legal and moral clarity proceeded to outline the obligations of all states with respect to its opinion to the effect that, and I quote, "all states are under an obligation not to recognize as legal the situation arising from the unlawful presence of the State of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory, and not to render aid or assistance in maintaining the situation created by the continued presence of the State of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory." End of quote. Further, the Court opined that international organizations, including the United Nations, are under an obligation not to recognize as legal the situation arising from the unlawful presence of the State of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory. And finally, the International Court of Justice call on the United Nations, and especially the General Assembly, which requested this opinion, and the Security Council, to consider the precise modalities and further action required to bring to an end as rapidly as possible the unlawful presence of the State of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory. In welcoming the advisory opinion of the ICJ, Sierra Leone is of the view that the ask by the Court on the General Assembly is, as referred to, to consider the precise modalities and further action required to rapidly end the unlawful presence of Israel in occupied Palestine. The draft resolution, which has been put for our consideration, contains such precise modalities to give effect to the advisory opinion. Sierra Leone accepts the view that advisory opinions of the ICJ in and of themselves are not binding. However, we, the General Assembly, can give effect to the opinions of the Court. Further, in addition to their great legal weight and moral authority, ICJ advisory opinions can clarify international law and crystallize customary international law. can clarify international law and crystallize customary international law. The nineteenth July twenty twenty-four advisory opinion of the Court performs this important function, particularly with respect to the state of Palestine's right to self-determination, a use-cogent norm. The critical modalities contained in the draft resolution also follow the important customary international law principles as laid out in the International Law Commission's article on the responsibility of states for international wrongful act in that a state held responsible for an international wrongful act is required to stop the unlawful conduct and make reparations for the injury. This is the function the modalities in the draft resolution will play, hence our unequivocal support. Mister President, at this stage of intense violence in the Gaza Strip and the West Bank for over eleven months, Sierra Leone also considers this action by the General Assembly a significant step towards the realization of achieving the political horizon of the two states as highlighted in many resolutions on this question adopted by this assembly and the Security Council. The ICJ in their advisory opinion stressed, and I quote, "the urgent necessity for the United Nations to redouble its efforts to bring the Israel-Palestine conflict, which continues to pose a threat to international peace and security, to a speedy conclusion, thereby establishing a just and lasting peace in the region," end of quote. Accordingly, Sierra Leone forms its support for the two-state solution based on the General Assembly and Security Council resolutions adopted on the question of Palestine, beginning with Resolution one eight one two, which recommends an independent Jewish state and an independent Arab state in line with Article four one of the United Nations Charter. And I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Sierra Leone. I now give the floor to the distinguished representatives of Bahrain.
Señor presidente, muchas gracias por estar aquí y por darle a la comisión de la sesión de la décima. El diecinueve y el setgún de la Junta General de la Unidad Europea. Y les agradecer por estar aquí y por darle a la comisión de la décima. La Junta General de la Seguridad Europea ha mencionado la ley de la justicia internacional. Por las condiciones legislativas que han tenido, sobre las políticas y las medidas israelinas en las áreas palestinas, con las cuales el Quis del Sur y su construcción depende de la Junta General. Y enlazan a los países a los documentos que han recibido la Junta Europea, la Soria, la Arabia Saudita, el Camero, con la Junta de Organizaciones de Trabajo Islámico, y Uganda, con el movimiento de la muerte de la vida. El presidente ha invitado a la Junta de la Bahrein a la Ley de la Justicia Internacional y ha participado en la decisión que se esperará en la Junta General en poco tiempo. En particular, tiene una importancia en el ayudo del derecho a la gente palestina que está en marcha en una medida precaria. Y la ciudadanía nacional de su país, la pequeña y la mayor, el Quis del Sur, confía en las decisiones mundiales. Y en la continuación de la guerra en Gaza, a medida que se acaba el año, la Junta de la Bahrein ha invitado a la sociedad internacional para que se den las responsabilidades de la tasa de incendios y de la protección de los pacientes y de la facilitación de la ayuda humana a los países. Como lo asegura la Junta de la Bahrein, en lo que se refiere a la cumbre de la tercera y tercera, la que se celebró en la Junta de la Bahrein en mayo pasado, por la señora de la señora de la Casa del General, el rey Hamad Ben Eissa, el exétil, rey de la Junta de la Bahrein, el protector de Allah, y la construyó con la iniciativa de la reunión de la ONU para resolver la cuestión palestina a base de la situación de los dos países, con el fin de desahuciar el Israel a las áreas árabes, y de hacer que la ciudad palestina la pequeña y la mayor sea la que más se encuentra. Y finalmente, asegura a la Junta de la Bahrein que su ayuda internacionalista a la guerra y la discusión para detener la guerra en Gaza, y invita a la sociedad internacional a que se den las responsabilidades en el cuidado de los derechos de la gente palestina que está en marcha, y en el ayudo de la salud, la justicia y el conjunto, con el fin de aumentar la seguridad y el estabilidad en el área de salud de todos los pueblos de la ciudad.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bahrain. In light of the decision taken by the General Assembly yesterday to suspend the debate on agenda item this morning, the Assembly shall now proceed to consider Draft Resolution A slash ES ten slash L thirty-one revision one. I give the floor to the representative of the Secretariat.
Thank you, Mister President. The present oral statement is made in the context of Rule one fifty-three of the Rules of Procedure of the General Assembly. The present statement has also been distributed to member states. Under the terms of operative paragraph thirteen of the draft resolution, the General Assembly would decide to conven during the seventy-nine session of the General Assembly an international conference under the auspices of the Assembly for the implementation of the United Nations' resolutions pertaining to the question of Palestine and the two-state solution for the achievement of a just, lasting and comprehensive peace in the Middle East. With regards to operative paragraph thirteen of the draft resolution, in the absence of modalities for the international conference, it is not possible at the present time to estimate the potential costs implications of the requirements of the conference. When the format, scope and modalities of the conference are determined, the Secretary General would assess the budgetary implications and advise the General Assembly in accordance with Rule one fifty-three of the Rules of Procedures of the General Assembly. Furthermore, once modalities are known in accordance with established practice, availability of conference services and the date of the conference would be determined in consultation with the Department for General Assembly and Conference Management. In this regard, references made to operative paragraph eleven of General Assembly Resolution sixty-nine stroke two fifty and subsequent resolutions, the most reasoned of which is Resolution seventy-eight stroke two four five of twenty-two December twenty twenty-three, in which the Assembly invited member states to include in new legislative mandates adequate information on the modalities for the organization of conferences or meetings. I thank you, Mister President.
I thank the representative of the Secretariat. For your information, the draft resolutions have closed for E sponsorship. I now give the floor to representative of the Secretariat.
Thank you, Mister President. I should like to announce that since the submission of the draft resolution and in addition to the delegations listed on the L document, the following countries have also become co-sponsors of A slash ES ten stroke L thirty-one revision one: Afghanistan, Belize, Brazil, Brunei Darussalam, Chad, Comoras, Cuba, Gambia, Guinea, Honduras, Indonesia, Ireland, Lebanon, Maldives, Niger, Norway, Saint Lucia, Slovenia, Somalia, Spain and the United Arab Emirates. If any other countries wish to co-sponsor E slash ES ten stroke L thirty-one revision one, please signify by pressing the microphone button now. Saint Kitts and Nevis, Zimbabwe. That's it, Mister President. Thank you.
I thank the representative of the Secretariat. Before giving the floor for explanations of vote before the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to ten minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. I now give the floor to Saint Vincent and the Grenadiers.
Thank you, Mister President. The conflict in the Gaza Strip continues not only to test the most fundamental principles of international law, but also the moral conscience of the international community. The situation is catastrophic with the Gaza Strip having devolved into a site of carnage. According to UNRWA, as of September thirteen, at least one point nine million people across the Gaza Strip are internally displaced, with OCHA reporting that between seventh October twenty twenty-three and ninth September twenty twenty-four, at least forty-one thousand and twenty Palestinians were killed and ninety-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five injured. Let us be clear: this dire situation is inextricably linked to illegal occupation, dispossession and harsh settler colonialism, which gradually eroded the internationally established borders. The recent advisory opinion by the International Court of Justice is unambiguous: Israel's continued presence in the occupied Palestinian territory is unlawful and must be brought to an end as rapidly as possible. This conclusion is in line with the many General Assembly resolutions that have been adopted. It is also in accordance with the unambiguous statements made in this hallowed hall by an overwhelming majority of member states which have not wavered in their support of the rights of the Palestinian people, including the right of self-determination, and which the ICJ has recognized as preemptory norm of international law. It is this international law that operates as the public policy fabric in our civilized society, and it is our responsibility to ensure that any attempt to flout these principles are not done with impunity. When international law is applied uniformly, it safeguards a framework of justice, accountability and predictability. It is in our collective interest to ensure its strict application, as its erosion enables the atrocities that we are currently witnessing in the Gaza Strip today. Mister President, Saint Vincent and the Grenadiers will vote in favor of the resolution being considered today, not just because it is morally right so to do, but human dignity and justice demand that we honor the fundamental principles that guide this institution. Both Israel and Palestine can exist peacefully alongside each other within secure and recognizable boundaries, free from threats or acts of force, and Resolution two forty-two remains the enabler of this achievement. Both nations deserve this peaceful coexistence. However, we underscore that this right to peace and security does not grant a license for the illegal occupation and suppression of the rights of the Palestinian people, which have been clearly established under international law. Additionally, and recalling the pronouncement of the ICJ in its advisory opinion, occupation cannot transfer or confer sovereignty to the occupying power. Excellencies, the stains of the ongoing war are being etched into the narrative of our history, imprinted deeply into the palms of our hands, and the emphasis on nationalistic pursuits and politics to the detriment of lives and livelihoods are reprehensible, and a solution will not and cannot be found in hostilities. The only viable way forward is one achieved through dialogue and peaceful means. The international community, particularly those with influence, are under an obligation to work constructively towards facilitating an end to the hostilities that would enable an environment conducive to achieving a long-term solution. Naturally, this would mean supporting this resolution to give effect to the advisory opinion of the ICJ. As responsible actors, we must rise to the occasion and prioritize the greater good of humanity and future generations. I thank you.
I thank Saint Vincent and the Grenadiers. I now give the floor to Papua New Guinea.
Mister President, excellencies and distinguished fellow delegates, this being the first occasion for my delegation to address you, Mister President, in your new capacity as the president of the General Assembly, may I take this occasion to congratulate you and the distinguished delegation of Cameroon for your important mandate and to also wish you all the best. Mister President, Papua New Guinea notes with great interest and concern the draft resolution before this assembly, subsequent to the ICJ advisory opinion issued on nineteenth July twenty twenty-four. Let me firstly place on record that Papua New Guinea, as a member of the Non-Aligned Movement, regrettably disassociates itself from the Non-Aligned Movement co-sponsorship of the draft resolution before us today and also the accompanying statement delivered yesterday by the distinguished delegation of Uganda as chair of the Coordinating Bureau of the Non-Aligned Movement. We do so because elements contained therein, the draft resolution and the NAM statement, are inconsistent with our national position on the issues addressed. Mister President, like many other countries, Papua New Guinea continues to be concerned with the serious evolving humanitarian peace and security and other challenges in Palestine and Israel, which continue to impact adversely the lives and livelihoods of both Israelis and Palestinians alike, and also its wider implications for the Middle East region and beyond. It is nearly a year since the terrible, deplorable, tragic Hamas-led terrorist attack on Israel and the taking of hostages. Those remaining hostages in captivity must be returned immediately to Israel without further precautions. We condemn in the strongest terms those Israeli hostages murdered recently. Those responsible for the murders must be held accountable. It is also unacceptable that a disproportionate number of Palestinians continue to be killed, maimed and left destitute. This conflict must be ended for the sake of both Israelis and Palestinians. We pay tribute to those parties, including Egypt, United States and Qatar, seeking pathways to ending this tragic conflict. Likewise, the brave humanitarian frontline workers serving affected peoples and communities in the conflict areas, including those that have fallen in their line of duty, including from the UN, deserve our commendation and support. Mister President, the draft resolution before this assembly demands that Israel make unilateral concessions without any reciprocal steps from the other parties involved. Such unbalanced demands in our consideration- Such unbalanced demands, in our considered view, will not only perpetuate the conflict, but may also reinforce views that the ICJ advisory opinion proceedings may have been biased, given the court's sole focus on the actions of Israel and not the policies and practices of all actors involved in the conflict. Ultimately, the Israeli-Palestinian conflict can only be resolved around the negotiating table through peaceful dialogue, not in the courtroom or in other fora. We therefore call on both parties to return to the negotiating table, including through a two-state solution process, to finding a mutually amicable and lasting political settlement that provides for both Israel and Palestine to live side by side in peace and security. Mr. President, we also recognize the seriousness of the various calls being made in this draft resolution. Considering the importance of those issues, it is regrettable that for small developing countries like my own, we have yet to comprehensively consider the ICJ advisory opinion on the legal consequences arising from the policies and practices of Israel in occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. This is given the fact that the ICJ advisory opinion was only delivered less than two months ago. The importance of adequate timing for proper consideration of the issues related to the ICJ advisory opinion at the national level cannot be overstated, Mr. President. Mr. President, another most important point related to the ICJ advisory opinion that needs to be carefully conceded is the level of dissenting and separate opinions from the court judges and what this signifies. Some of them are profound and most troubling, to say the least. This raises the specter of the credibility of the advisory opinion. While we recognize that the ICJ should be treated with the utmost respect, including for its advisory opinions, however, the manner and the character of the process leading to the advisory opinion calls into question the legitimacy of the advisory opinion itself. Mr. President, it is for these reasons that Papua New Guinea today will vote against the Tenth Emergency Special Session Resolution now before the General Assembly, and I thank you.
I thank Papua New Guinea. I give the floor to Marshall Islands.
Thank you, Mr. President. And before I begin, Mr. President, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate you on your election as the president for this assembly. Mr. President, the government of the Republic of the Marshall Islands hereby announce his decision to vote in favor of the upcoming United Nations resolutions regarding the situation in Palestine. This decision has been reached after careful consideration and reflects our deep commitment to human rights values and international law. And as a nation that has experienced profound impacts of global conflicts, we cannot remain silent in the face of the oncoming sufferings of the Palestinian people. Our vote is a testament to our conscience and our belief in the fundamental human rights and dignity of all people. The key points underlining our decision are based on the following. One, humanitarian concerns. We are deeply troubled by the reports of civilian casualties and the deteriorating living conditions in Palestinian territories. As a global community, we have a moral obligation to address this humanitarian crisis. Number two, commitments to international law. Our support for this resolution aligns with our unwavering respect for international law and the advisory opinions of the International Court of Justice. Advisory number three, advocacy for peaceful resolution. Mr. President, we believe this resolution is a step towards encouraging a peaceful negotiated settlement of the longstanding conflict, which is crucial for regional and global stability. Number four, Mr. President, our support for self-determination. As a small island nation that values its sovereignty, we stand in solidarity with the Palestinian people's right to self-determination. Number five, finally, Mr. President, call for international action. Our vote is a call to the international community to increase efforts in providing humanitarian aid and supporting peace initiatives in the region. The Marshall Islands reaffirms its commitment to a two-state solution and urges all parties involved to engage in meaningful dialogue to achieve lasting peace. We believe that our support for this resolution is consistent with our values and our visions for a more just and peaceful world. I thank you.
I thank Marshall Islands. We have heard the last speaker in explanation of vote before the vote. Before proceeding further, I wish to address the question concerning the majority required for the adoption of the draft resolution. In light of Article eighteen, paragraphs two and three of the Charter of the United Nations, is there any objection to taking action on draft resolution A/ES ten slash L thirty-one, revision one, by a two-thirds majority of the members present and voting? I see no objection. The two-thirds majority of members present and voting is therefore required for the adoption of draft resolution A/ES ten slash L thirty-one, slide revision one. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft resolution A/ES ten slash L thirty-one, slide revision one, entitled, and I quote, "Advisory opinion of the International Court of Justice on the legal consequences arising from Israel's policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, and from the illegality of Israel's continued presence in the occupied Palestinian territory." A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft resolution A/ES ten slash L thirty-one, slide revision one, please signify. Those against? Abstentions?
The General Assembly is now voting on draft resolution A/ES ten slash L thirty-one, revision one, entitled, "Advisory opinion of the International Court of Justice on the legal consequences arising from Israel's policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, and from the illegality of Israel's continuous presence in the occupied Palestinian territory." Will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. And please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows. In favor, one hundred and twenty-four. Against, fourteen. Abstentions, forty-three. Draft resolution A/ES ten slash L thirty-one, slide revision one, is adopted. Before giving the floor for explanations of vote after the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to ten minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. Order, please. Order, please. I give the floor to New Zealand.
Mr. President, New Zealand supported this resolution after careful consideration. We did so because we support a two-state solution and because we support international law. The Israel-Palestinian conflict has gone on for far too long. The suffering it has led to on both sides is immense. Its broader destabilizing impact on the region is profound. The effects are felt as far away as New Zealand. The only way to end the conflict is the two-state solution. Both sides need to return to negotiations to achieve this. This resolution, though not perfect, sets the international community's expectations that both parties must move towards a negotiated settlement. We hope the passage of this resolution will provide impetus to the parties to reengage in negotiations. The twelve-month timeframe set out in the resolution for Israeli withdrawal from the occupied Palestinian territory is frankly unrealistic. A two-state solution needs to be the product of negotiations. Aspirations need to be tempered by realism, given the complexities to be addressed. However, in the next twelve months, we expect Israel to take meaningful steps towards compliance with international law, particularly through the withdrawal from the occupied Palestinian territory. We would also expect the Palestinian Authority to take meaningful steps to assume political and security control of the occupied territory. We are strong supporters of the International Court of Justice. The ICJ's advisory opinion aligns with New Zealand's longstanding view that Israel's conduct in the occupied Palestinian territory is unlawful. However, we are disappointed that, in some cases, the resolution goes beyond what was envisaged in the advisory opinion. Although the resolution does not impose obligations on New Zealand beyond any already existing under international law, New Zealand stands ready to implement any measures adopted by the UN Security Council. New Zealand will continue to impose travel bans against extremist settlers and others involved in violations of international humanitarian law, as we deem appropriate. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank New Zealand. I give the floor to Singapore.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm taking the floor to explain my delegation's vote on the resolution we have just adopted. Singapore has always attached the greatest importance to international law and the principles of the UN Charter. We voted in favor of this resolution after careful and thorough consideration due to our respect for the International Court of Justice, which is the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, as well as for international law more broadly. Nevertheless, we wish to place on record our serious reservations, as we did when General Assembly Resolution seventy-seven slash two four seven was adopted in November 2022 about the use of the court's advisory jurisdiction to bypass the need for state consent in submitting what are essentially political disputes between two parties for adjudication. This approach sets an unsettling precedent with wider implications that warrant further examination. We do not consider it appropriate to involve the court in such disputes in this way. Mr. President, we have serious reservations about the resolution's call for measures that have not been negotiated by the Israelis and Palestinians. The party is directly involved in the conflict. We are concerned that this will further harden positions on both sides and make the prospects of a political solution even more remote. Both Israelis and Palestinians have legitimate security needs that must be taken into consideration in order to break the cycle of violence. Our longstanding view remains that the Israeli-Palestinian conflict can only be resolved through direct negotiations between both sides so as to achieve a comprehensive, just, and durable solution. In this connection, Singapore does not endorse the overreaching scope of the modalities and actions prescribed by the resolution for states, particularly but not limited to those enumerated in operative paragraphs four and five. They include measures that go beyond not just the advisory opinion, but also our current obligations under international law, and will have far-reaching consequences on the prospects of the peace process. As nearly a year has passed since the attack of seventh October by Hamas on Israel, our priority now must be to redouble efforts to implement UN Security Council resolutions on the situation in Gaza and work towards a ceasefire. The seventh October attack by Hamas on Israel was a terrorist attack, and Israel, like every country, has a right to defend itself in accordance with international law. Today, one hundred and one hostages still remain in Gaza, and Singapore continues to call for their safe, unconditional, and immediate release. At the same time, in exercising its right of defense, Israel must comply fully with international law, including international humanitarian law and the rules governing including international humanitarian law and the rules governing the conduct of war. In our view, the Israeli military response has gone too far. In addition, Singapore's consistent view on Israeli settlements is that they are illegal under international law and they make it much harder to arrive at a two-state solution. Both sides must find the resolve to remove obstacles to peace and work towards a negotiated two-state solution in accordance with the relevant UN Security Council resolutions. And returning to this resolution that we have just adopted today, however well-intentioned we are in seeking clarity on the legal position, we need to exercise the utmost care in the appropriateness of involving the Court in disputes like this where the ultimate objective of an enduring solution depends on the disputing parties being able to achieve a negotiated solution. In Singapore's view, that should surely be the goal of all members of this august assembly. I thank you very much for your attention.
I thank Singapore and I give the floor to Czechia.
Madam President, excellencies, allow me to begin by reiterating Czechia's unwavering support for the people of the West Bank and Gaza in their pursuit of political aspirations for their own future statehood. My country also stands ready to support any meaningful efforts to end violence in the region. However, for these efforts to succeed, they must be the result of direct negotiations between Israel and the Palestinians, as this offers the only viable path to lasting security and peace for all. Given the current circumstances on the ground, we believe that this resolution is not a step in the right direction as it risks potentially sowing further divisions and hindering peace talks in an already fragile conflict situation. Furthermore, the adopted resolution fails to address the immense security challenges Israel faces, including Hamas's use of the Gaza Strip as a launching pad for its rampage of killing of Israelis while systematically using the Palestinian civilians as human shields. Allow me to take this opportunity to reiterate our call for the immediate release of all the hostages brutally abducted on the seventh of October. It is with great concern that I must note that this General Assembly has once again failed to acknowledge this issue with today's vote. Madam President, Czechia fully respects the role and independence of the International Court of Justice. However, we regret that due to the unilaterally formulated questions posed by the Resolution two forty-seven from December twenty twenty-two, the Court advisory opinion in question could not pay enough attention to Israel's legitimate security interests and its right to self-defense. And the resolution before us today goes even further and interprets the opinion expressed by the Court in an entirely one-sided way. Madam President, colleagues, it is of utmost importance to re-establish a political horizon towards a two-state solution. A negotiated agreement remains the only way forward to guarantee security, political stability, and democratic development for both Israel and Palestine. We also encourage the region to embark on a path of cooperation, including through the Abraham Accords, to foster a better future in the Middle East. Rather than introducing new initiatives here in New York, we need to see positive developments in the region. Madam President, it is precisely for these reasons that Czechia was not in a position to support the draft resolution and voted against it. I thank you.
I thank Czechia and I give the floor to Greece.
Madam President, today's vote takes place in the midst of a crisis in the Middle East which has long transcended to the regional level and has unfortunately taken on global dimensions. Dramatic developments on the ground over the last year have created an acute sense of urgency for addressing the situation in all its aspects. The horrendous terrorist attacks committed by Hamas on October seventh and the continued holding of hostages in Gaza are underlying in no uncertain terms the absolute necessity that Israel's legitimate security needs have to be addressed, respected, and safeguarded. In any case, Israel has the right to its security and self-defense. The present resolutions does not make any reference to the need to conduct direct negotiation between the parties to work towards a two-state solution, which has been the consistent position of the international community for decades. Yet Greece decided to vote in favor of the resolution. This decision is based on Greece's unwavering support of international law and the institutions that embody it, the International Court of Justice. It is our principle belief that the work of the International Court of Justice should be protected, even in case of disagreement. International law and the rule of law lie in the heart of the Charter of the United Nations and serve as a shield against all forms of violations. Madam President, lastly, allow me to reiterate our sincere desire to promote, also through our principled stance today, a political process towards a two-state solution. Greece, as a country in the region, stands ready to assist any peace effort conducive to the promotion of the much-needed stability and prosperity in the region. I thank you.
I thank Greece and next speaker is United Kingdom.
Thank you, President. The United Kingdom has abstained on today's resolution. The United Kingdom has done so not because we do not support the central findings of the ICJ's advisory opinion, but rather because the resolution does not provide sufficient clarity to effectively advance our shared aim of a peace premised on a negotiated two-state solution, a safe and secure Israel alongside a safe and secure Palestinian state. As a state committed to the international rule of law, we respect the Court and call for states to unite around renewed efforts towards a negotiated settlement in accordance with international law and the relevant resolutions of the Security Council. We stand ready to work with other member states on future resolutions before the General Assembly and in the Security Council, seeking to fashion a broad consensus on the way forward with re-energized determination to accelerate the path to peace. While our abstention reflects our unwavering determination to focus on efforts to bring about a peaceful and negotiated two-state solution, the United Kingdom aims, by this statement, to indicate our clear view that Israel should bring an end to its presence in the occupied Palestinian territories as rapidly as possible. And every effort must be made to create the conditions for negotiations which provide for a sovereign, viable, and free Palestine alongside a safe, secure, and free Israel, recognizing the security concerns and right to self-defense of each one. We must also work towards the reunification of the West Bank, including East Jerusalem and Gaza, in line with nineteen sixty-seven borders and under the effective control of the Palestinian Authority as a fundamental step towards a two-state solution. Turning now to address settlements in particular, the United Kingdom is gravely concerned by Israel's continued actions which undermine prospects for peace. Expansion of settlements in clear violation of international law must cease immediately. There have been unprecedented levels of violence by extremist settlers over the past year. We have witnessed with grave concern how an increasing number of residents of illegal Israeli settlements and outposts have systematically used harassment, intimidation, and violence to put pressure on Palestinian communities to leave their land. We call on Israel to hold those responsible to account. Alongside our partners, the UK has imposed sanctions on individuals and entities responsible for these acts. We continue to track closely these acts of violence and, where appropriate, the UK will seek to extend sanctions. We are clear: Any efforts to change the geographic or demographic makeup of the occupied Palestinian territories through force and outside a negotiated settlement are illegal. President, the situation in Gaza continues to subject Palestinian civilians to horrendous suffering and over a hundred hostages remain held by Hamas in abhorrent conditions. We need to see an immediate ceasefire in Gaza and the release of the hostages. We will continue to work urgently to help bring peace and galvanize a political process towards a two-state solution which provides long-term peace and security for both Israelis and Palestinians alike. I thank you.
I thank United Kingdom and I give the floor to Thailand.
Madam President, Thailand reiterates our firm respect to international law and our adherence to the purpose and principle enshrined in the UN Charter, in particular, respect for sovereignty, territorial integrity, and the non-use of forces against states. We remain deeply concerned with the ongoing violence and the dire humanitarian situation in Gaza, which have gravely affected the civilian population. We continue to urge all parties concerned to immediately ceasefire and terminate all acts of hostility, protect civilians and civilian infrastructure, comply with international humanitarian law, and implement relevant UN Security Council resolutions to alleviate the catastrophic humanitarian crisis in Gaza. Thailand reiterates the call for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages, including Thai nationals, as well as their proper treatment pending their release. Today, Madam President, we voted in favor of the resolution with the hope that this resolution would reinvigorate momentum towards peace and security in the region and the eventual fulfillment of the two-state solution. Our voting today reflects our principle in accordance with international law and the UN Charter. We continue to appeal to all sides to seek ways to resolve the situation through peaceful means with a view to realizing the two-state solution by which the states of Israel and Palestine live side by side in peace and security in accordance with international law and the relevant UN resolutions. I thank you, Madam President.
I thank Thailand and give the floor to Canada.
Madam la presidente, la posición del Canadá sobre las cuestiones relativas al conflicto israelo-palestino es guiada por nuestro engagement histórico y indefectible en el derecho internacional y un cadre que garantiza el bienestar y seguridad de los israelíes y palestinos. Las horrendas ataques terroristas de Hamas del siete de octubre que el Canadá continúa condenando sin duda y la situación humanitaria catastrófica en Gaza han hecho más urgente que nunca el retorno a un proceso llevado a una solución a dos estados. Se debe apagar inmediatamente el fuego y la liberación de todos los habitantes. Hamas debe depositar armas y medidas urgentes son necesarias para responder a la catástrofe humanitaria. El Canadá continuará de apoyar el honor a los esfuerzos humanitarios de reconstrucción y de desarrollo, así como la ayuda a la seguridad, para asegurar una mayor seguridad y una mayor estabilidad en la región. Las pérdidas en vidas humanas y la destrucción de infraestructuras de Gaza son, francamente, horribles y inaceptables. Los procesos de responsabilidad jurídica, de refuerzo de la confianza y de establecimiento de las condiciones necesarias a la paz y a la justicia van necesitar esfuerzos extraordinarios de todos los partidos y de nosotros todos. El Canadá se prepara para hacer nuestra parte. Madam President, let us be clear that there are aspects of this resolution which Canada agrees with. Canada does not recognize permanent Israeli control over territories occupied in nineteen sixty-seven and, to be precise, that has been a consistent position of all Canadian governments since that time. The Fourth Geneva Convention applies in the occupied territories and clearly establishes Israel's obligations as an occupying power, in particularly with respect to the humane treatment of the inhabitants of the occupied territories. Canada also considers Israeli settlements to be a violation of the Fourth Geneva Convention. We also condemn violence by extremist settlers that harm Palestinians and threaten prospects for peace. Canada recognizes the Palestinian right to self-determination and supports the creation of the Palestinian state. We support the ICJ's role in the peaceful settlement of disputes and we support its role in upholding the international rules-based order. We took note of the advisory opinion that was issued on July the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four and at that time we called on Israel to respond substantively to this opinion. We continue to do so. Our problem with the resolution is that it goes well beyond the ICJ advisory opinion. We cannot support a resolution where one party, the state of Israel, is held solely responsible for the conflict. Canada supports Israel's right to live in peace with its neighbors with secure boundaries and recognizes Israel's right to ensure its own security. This is the right of every sovereign state in this assembly. However, there is no mention in the resolution of the need to end terrorism for which Israel has serious and legitimate security concerns. Once again, this resolution fails to mention the horrendous attack and the atrocities of October seventh, twenty twenty-four, which were carried out by Hamas. We continue to support Israel's right to defend itself against any form of terrorism. In addition, we are concerned with this resolution contains language that aligns with boycott divestment sanctions, which Canada firmly opposes. This effort seeks to uniquely isolate Israel in a conflict where everyone in this room knows that many other states and non-state actors are also directly involved. This is not the path to a just resolution of the conflict. For these reasons, Canada has voted to abstain on this resolution. We are committed to continue our work with the international community to help advance peace in the region, which must include a two-state solution. We will always stand with the Israeli and the Palestinian peoples in their right to live in peace, to right to live in security, and the right to live in dignity. And this is the only path that will take us to a long-lasting solution to this ongoing crisis with which this assembly has been involved since the creation of the United Nations. Thank you, Madam President.
I thank Canada and I give the floor to Australia.
President, thank you. Australia is resolute in advancing the cause of peace around the world, including the urgent need for a two-state solution in the Middle East. And Australia is a resolute defender of international law, including the International Court of Justice. That is why we abstained on this vote with great disappointment. We wanted to vote for a resolution that directly reflected the ICJ advisory opinion. We wanted to vote for a resolution that clearly offered the Palestinian people a path to self-determination and gave the world a path to a two-state solution. And we wanted to vote for a resolution that gave the international community a clear way to respond to the International Court of Justice's advisory opinion. However, we are concerned that by making demands of the entire United Nations membership that go beyond the scope of the advisory opinion, the resolution distracts from what the world needs Israel to do. President, we are deeply disappointed these concerns were not able to be addressed. Australia supports many of the principles of this resolution, and we are already doing much of what it calls for. We adopted the name "occupied Palestinian territories" because that is what they are. We have affirmed that Israeli settlements in the occupied Palestinian territories are illegal. We insist Israel must cease settlement activity. We have sanctioned extremist Israeli settlers because they must be held to account for their violence. We will deny anyone identified as an extremist settler a visa to travel to Australia. We doubled our funding to UNRWA because it does vital work. We have not supplied weapons to Israel in at least the last five years. We continue to call out unilateral actions that undermine the prospect for peace, and we have moved our position on recognition. We now see recognition as an integral part of a peace process and as a way to contribute meaningfully towards the realization of a two-state solution. It's a matter of when, not if. It's the only way to break the cycle of violence, the only hope for a prosperous future for both peoples, a Palestinian state and the State of Israel side by side behind secure borders. Any alternative is either unacceptable or unachievable. President, the occupation must be brought to an end, such that we see security for Palestinians, for Israel, and for the region. To conclude, we meet at a time when the situation in Gaza is catastrophic, where the human suffering is unacceptable, where international law is under strain, and when the region is on the brink of escalation. We urge member states to remain focused on these most desperately urgent issues. We want to see aid flow at scale. We want to see civilians protected, and we want terrorist group Hamas to release the hostages it took on October 7. There must be an immediate ceasefire, and this conflict must end. Thank you, President.
I thank Australia and give the floor to Japan.
Thank you, Madam President. Japan voted in favor of the resolution after thorough consideration. We would like to make the following points as our explanation of vote. First, as a country that values the rule of law, Japan attaches great importance to the role of the ICJ and its advisory opinions. Japan has been contributing to the work of ICJ, including this advisory opinion, by participating in the proceedings where we elaborated on the prohibition of acquisition of territory by force. Second, as stated in the advisory opinion, Israel's continued settlement activities are in violation of international law. They undermine the prospect for a two-state solution. The ICJ tasked the General Assembly to follow up on its advisory opinion. Therefore, Japan has been constructively bothered in such discussions as the responsible member state. However, we observed that remained some elements which would have required further consideration on what the most appropriate measures would be to address the advisory opinion. For instance, the resolution includes language regarding sanctions and other issues related to bilateral relations. We understand that these measures are to be taken based on the domestic laws and policy decisions of each country. We should not lose sight of what the only realistic approach for ending Israel-Palestine conflict is. It is to rebuild trust between the parties and to ultimately realize a two-state solution through negotiations, in line with international law and based on the relevant UN Security Council resolutions as well as internationally agreed parameters. Last but not least, with regard to grave situation in Gaza, Japan has consistently condemned the terror attacks by Hamas and others and has expressed deep concern about the deteriorating humanitarian situation. We again call for immediate ceasefire, the release of the hostages, and the delivery of desperately needed humanitarian aid to Palestinians in Gaza at scale. Japan will continue to strongly support the tireless efforts of the United States, Egypt, and Qatar to this end. I thank you.
I thank Japan and give the floor to Bulgaria.
Thank you, Madam President. Bulgaria is firmly committed to upholding the principles of international law. We are convinced that only through the full respect of international law, peace, security, and justice can be achieved. The International Court of Justice is essential in upholding those principles, and undoubtedly its findings and those of all international judicial institutions should be respected and implemented by all. We have consistently supported the legitimate aspirations of the Palestinian people pertaining to their right to self-determination, and we are convinced that the Palestinian people, like all peoples, have the right to a sovereign and an independent state. A just and comprehensive resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict based on the two-state solution with the State of Israel and an independent, democratic, contiguous, sovereign, and viable State of Palestine living side by side in peace and security and mutual recognition is needed, and now more than ever. Unfortunately, given the current political context, we are not convinced that the resolution just adopted will facilitate the achievement of this comprehensive goal. It goes beyond the scope of the ICJ advisory opinion and falls short of objectively addressing the realities on the ground. For that reason, Bulgaria was not in a position to support the resolution and abstained on it. Thank you.
I thank Bulgaria, and next speaker is Austria.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Vice President. Colleagues, as you saw, Austria abstained on draft Resolution L 31 Rev 1. Here's why. Austria is strongly committed to strengthening the rule of law at the national and international levels and believes that an international system based on the respect for and the compliance with international law is an essential precondition for lasting peace, security, economic development, and social progress. Such a system benefits us all. We also want to reaffirm our full support for the International Court of Justice and its crucial role as the principal judicial organ of the UN. Austria respects the court's judgments and legal opinions, including the advisory opinion that this resolution addresses. Austria fully supports the vision of two states, Israel and Palestine, living side by side in peace and security within recognized borders based on the pre-1967 borders. Our political leaders have consistently advocated for this position. In January, Foreign Minister Schellenberg at the Security Council called on the international community to do more to achieve this aim by laying the foundations for a life in peace and dignity for Israelis and Palestinians alike. Austria remains committed to this goal, but we believe that genuine peace and security for Israelis and Palestinians alike can only be achieved through a political process. It's regrettable and incomprehensible that the resolution does not reflect the need for such a negotiation process. It also does not take into account Israel's legitimate security concerns. Furthermore, as many of the colleagues who spoke before me pointed out, the resolution goes beyond the advisory opinion in several areas, including with a view to responsibilities of third states regarding trade relations with Israel and sanctions, which are not mentioned in the advisory opinion. While the European Union has adopted sanctions against certain individual violent settlers, the broad call for sanctions and import restrictions contained in the resolutions does not correspond to any legal obligation of third states. Finally, let me emphasize that Austria does not support the establishment of any additional follow-up mechanisms under Article III CRED as envisaged by the resolution, since this would constitute a duplication of the already existing mechanisms and procedures of the convention itself. For the above reasons, Austria abstained on the draft resolution today and calls instead on both sides to return to the negotiation table. Austria stands ready to support efforts that can rebuild hope for peace, that liberate the hostages held by Hamas terrorists, and brings an end to the catastrophic humanitarian situation in Gaza. We categorically reject any unilateral attempts from any side to undermine the prospects for a two-state solution. Thank you.
I thank Austria and give the floor to Belgium.
Merci, Madame La Presidente. Chers colleagues, avant toute chose, je souhaiterais remercier les auteurs de cette résolution pour leur approche constructive. La Belgique a voté en faveur du projet de résolution qui nous était soumis aujourd'hui. Ce vote s'inscrit dans l'an ligné de notre exposé oral à la Cour Internationale de Justice le 20 février dernier. La Belgique défend de façon constante que le respect du droit international doit être notre boussole et doit guider en toutes circonstances l'action de la communauté internationale. Comme une majorité des États de cette Assemblée, mon pays soutient résolument la Cour Internationale de Justice, qui constitue l'un des principaux piliers du système judiciaire international. La résolution approuvée aujourd'hui est en ligne avec la vie consultative de la Cour du 19 juillet. L'occupation illégale des territoires palestiniens et les politiques illicites de colonisation perpétues depuis des décennies, un système qui porte atteinte au droit humain de la population palestinienne dans un climat d'impunité. Cette réalité hypothèque les chances de tout processus de paix au Moyen-Orient. Ces pratiques doivent cesser. À défaut de s'être vu proposer des modalités ou actions alternatives, mon pays soutient celle présentée aujourd'hui par le billet de cette résolution. La Belgique applique la politique de différenciation à l'égard des colonies israéliennes, dans le respect de la Résolution 2334 du Conseil de Sécurité. La Belgique note par ailleurs que des sanctions ont déjà été adoptées contre des colons violents, notamment dans un cadre européen. La Belgique est prête à discuter de l'adoption, toujours dans ce cadre, de nouvelles contre-mesures efficaces et proportionnées par rapport aux actions illicites identifiées par la Cour. L'adoption de cette résolution ne signifie pas une revue à la baisse du droit d'Israël à exister dans ses frontières reconnues internationalement, et encore moins une diminution de la sécurité de la population israélienne, bien au contraire. Soyons très clairs à ce sujet. Les groupes terroristes tels que Hamas, dont nous condamons fermement l'action, se nourrissent de l'oppression, du déni de justice, et du sentiment d'impuissance qui accable celles et ceux dont les droits sont niés. Ce texte offre une perspective réaliste pour rendre espoir dans la force du droit à une population qui, du fait des injustices qu'elle subit depuis très longtemps, est laissée à la merci des idéologies extrémistes. À nous d'y donner et faire pour que cette résolution puisse pleinement contribuer à promouvoir la paix et la réconciliation. Dans cet esprit, la Belgique accueille favorablement l'Organisation à New York ce 26 septembre d'une réunion sur la situation à Gaza et la mise en œuvre de la solution des deux États qu'on voit vers une paix juste et globale, et espère qu'un processus réaliste pourra y être défini. Elle soutient pleinement la vision d'une région où deux États démocratiques, Israël et la Palestine, vivent côte à côte en paix à l'intérieur de frontières sûres et reconnues. Nous le savons, nous faisons face à un chemin long et difficile. Pour apaiser les souffrances incommensurables causées par ce conflit et limiter les risques de son extension, la Belgique continue d'appeler à la mise en œuvre des résolutions de cette Assemblée et du Conseil de Sécurité, à un cessez-le-feu immédiat à Gaza, à la libération immédiate de tous les otages, au respect du droit international humanitaire par toutes les parties au conflit, et à une augmentation significative, durable, et sans condition des flux d'aide humanitaire dans l'ensemble de la bande de Gaza, et à un accès humanitaire terrestre total. La Belgique est convaincue qu'une solution politique négociée est la seule perspective qui permet tant aux israéliens qu'aux palestiniens de vivre décemment en paix côte à côte. Nous continuerons de soutenir résolument tous les efforts en ce sens. Je vous remercie.
I thank Belgium and give the floor to Argentina.
Señora Presidente, la República Argentina apoya el papel fundamental de la Corte Internacional de Justicia, principal órgano judicial de las Naciones Unidas, en defensa del derecho internacional y en mantenimiento de la paz y seguridad internacionales. En particular, la Argentina destaca la importante tarea que la Corte desempeña en ejercicio de sus funciones contenciosas, posibilitando el arreglo de controversias internacionales por medios pacíficos, de manera de no poner en peligro ni la paz, ni la seguridad internacionales, ni la justicia. Asimismo, la Argentina remarca la importancia que reviste la función consultiva del tribunal. Las conclusiones del órgano judicial principal de las Naciones Unidas no solo determinan e interpretan las reglas de derecho que son aplicables a las Naciones Unidas, si también a todos los países de la comunidad internacional. Si bien las opiniones consultivas de la Corte Internacional de Justicia no son vinculantes juricament, constituyen antecedentes que contribuyen a la clarificación y el desarrollo del derecho internacional. Más aún, si son solicitadas por la Asamblea General, principal órgano deliberativo de las Naciones Unidas. En efecto, cabe tener presente que lo que sí es vinculante es el derecho internacional con su estudinario y lo establecido en los tratados internacionales vigentes. En ese sentido, las opiniones de la Corte sobre lo que establece el derecho con su estudinario y sobre cómo han de interpretarse los tratados vigentes son una guía sumamente útil para los Estados. En línea con el compromiso de la Argentina con el máximo tribunal de la Haya, entendemos que el mecanismo jurídico propio de la Corte no debería ser distorsionado ni descontextualizado, sino, por el contrario, preservado en pos de la defensa y el respeto al derecho internacional de conformidad con su estatuto y la carta de las Naciones Unidas. En este caso, la resolución adoptada va más allá de lo establecido la opinión consultiva, impactando su carácter no vinculante. Asimismo, la resolución adoptada omite mención al ataque de Jamás el 7 de octubre del 2023, hecho que no puede ser ignorado de modo alguno. En este contexto, avanzar en la implementación del opinión consultiva como busca la resolución adoptada pondría en riesgo aquellas iniciativas tendientes a lograr un cese del fuego con la que la República Argentina está firmemente comprometida. Señora Presidenta, este voto negativo no significa en modo alguno que la República Argentina deje de estar comprometida con una paz justa y definitiva al conflicto palestino-israelí, de conformidad con el derecho internacional y las resoluciones pertinentes de la Asamblea General y del Consejo de Seguridad de las Naciones Unidas. Solamente a través de la reanudación de un proceso de diálogo basado en una solución de dos Estados, viviendo lado a lado en paz y seguridad dentro de fronteras seguras e internacionalmente reconocidas. viviendo lado a lado en paz y seguridad dentro de fronteras seguras e internacionalmente reconocidas, será posible y lograr una paz duradera. Muchas gracias.
I thank Argentina and give the floor to the Kingdom of the Netherlands.
Madam President, I thank you for convening this week's emergency special session. On behalf of the Kingdom of the Netherlands, it's my honour to deliver this explanation of vote. It relates to the Resolution on the Advisory Opinion of the International Court of Justice on the legal consequences arising from Israel's policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, and from the illegality of Israel's continued presence in the occupied Palestinian territories. Madam President, we thank the International Court of Justice for its valuable advisory opinion, which formed the basis of today's resolution. The Kingdom of the Netherlands holds the International Court of Justice in the highest esteem as the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, and we are proud to host the Court in The Hague. This resolution is an important reflection on the Court's advisory opinion and possible future steps. Currently, the implications of the advisory opinion for Dutch policy are under consideration in our government. The Kingdom of the Netherlands has abstained on the resolution at hand. We have done so taking into account the following considerations: one, although not formally part of the advisory opinion, the resolution takes the period after 7 October into account, without referencing the heinous attack of Hamas on Israel, with great implications for Israel's security. While the war that unfolded afterwards is still ongoing and the fate of the many hostages is still uncertain, we all witness the catastrophic humanitarian situation and the enormous loss of human life in Gaza that needs to be addressed immediately, including through an immediate ceasefire. Two, in this context, a negotiated and sustainable two-state solution is now needed more than ever. Unilateral calls for an internationally imposed solution or for a time-specific withdrawal are not helpful, nor are unilateral actions like expansion of settlements on the ground, as they bring the two-state solution further out of sight and are not in line with international law. We therefore urge both parties to engage in talks that leads to a sustainable situation where the Israeli and Palestinian people, as well as the wider region, can live in peace and security. We reaffirm our commitment to the realization of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination, including its right to an independent, democratic, contiguous, sovereign, and viable state living side by side in peace and security with Israel. Three, the Kingdom of the Netherlands has reservations regarding operative paragraph 5b of the resolution. We therefore like to add the following additional clarification to our vote. Considering the current situation in the region, Israel's security concerns remain legitimate. While it remains of utmost importance that Israel retains its right and ability to defend itself, we emphasize that this must be exercised in accordance with the UN Charter and other relevant areas of international law, including humanitarian law. In that light, the Kingdom of the Netherlands wishes to point out that the transfer of arms, munitions, and related equipment to all parties involved in the conflict should be prevented when it is concluded that these transfers are contrary to international export control norms and standards. Madam President, I would like to end by again thanking the International Court of Justice for its valuable advisory opinion. The Kingdom of the Netherlands will continue to work with all parties towards a sustainable and peaceful solution. Thank you.
I thank the Kingdom of the Netherlands and give the floor to Hungary.
Madam President, Hungary has decided to vote no on today's resolution. Our position is not contradictory to our longstanding commitment to the International Court of Justice. We take note of the Court's advisory opinion issued on 19 July 2024 and to quote the President of the ICJ, His Excellency Inab Salam: "By stating the law, the Court provides the parties and the international community with a reliable basis for a just, comprehensive, and lasting peace. We fully share this vision of peace in the region and commit to the means necessary and adequate to achieve it." The current resolution, however, does not set a path forward for implementing the ICJ advisory opinion. Instead, it selectively interprets the Court's opinion, imposes deadlines that may not be feasible on the ground, and calls for unilateral actions that would undermine efforts to rebuild trust and to create an atmosphere where negotiations are possible. Furthermore, we believe that the path through achieving peace and resolving the longstanding Israeli-Palestinian conflict must be grounded in direct bilateral negotiations between the parties. Hungary continues to fully support any meaningful effort agreed by the parties, including the Oslo Framework, that has been and remains the reference point for any further negotiations. Regrettably, instead of fostering reconciliation and returning to dialogue, the violence in the region has escalated to levels not seen since 2005. Amidst these rising tensions, we stress that unilateral actions that could further inflame the situation must be avoided. We believe that there are no quick fixes to the conflict. First, we must ensure that terrorist attacks like the one on 7 October 2023 will not happen again. Secure the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages. Bring an end to the hostilities in Gaza and ensure full, rapid, safe, and unhindered access to humanitarian aid at scale for Palestinians in need. Once hostility cease, a political solution must be pursued, one that is based on a long-term strategy agreed by all parties involved, supported by the Security Council. Negotiations on all issues will only succeed if international law and justice serve as their foundation. Hungary reaffirms its support to a two-state solution that allows the State of Israel to live side by side in peace and security and mutual recognition with an independent, demographic, sovereign, and viable Palestinian state. I thank you.
I thank Hungary and give the floor to Syrian Arab Republic.
Señor presidente, I thank the European Union, the Syrian Republic, and all countries that voted for the decision today. The Syrian Republic voted for the decision, expressing its rejection of the Israeli occupation of the Palestinian territories in Palestine, Jalan Suri, and North Lebanon. And I confirm that voting for the decision does not mean any harm to Israel's interests or to its claim to the Palestinian culture. That the decision has shown a big effect on the country's overall situation and is showing a lack of respect for our national laws, the international law, the religion, and the Palestinian people's rights. And I reject the refusal, which is not a problem for the Israeli occupation of the Palestinian and Arab territories generally. And with the decision today, the United States is arguing that it is not a defeat to a Palestinian state that is a little bit arrogant and is enjoying a complete advantage of the current administration to occupy the natural space between the countries that it has deserved. Thank you, President.
I thank Syrian Arab Republic and give the floor to the Republic of Korea.
Madam President, to begin with, we express our strong support for realizing the aspirations of Palestinians for an independent state, which is crucial in achieving a just, lasting, and comprehensive peace in the Middle East. In this regard, my delegation reiterates its support for the Land for Peace formula, a principle that has underpinned the peace process on the Palestinian issue for more than half a century. Any action in the General Assembly should be in line with this principle. The Land for Peace formula developed to achieve a just and lasting peace in the Middle East remains critical, particularly given the frustration with the stalled peace process and continued settlement expansion since the Oslo Accords. In this context, we note with concern that the text of the resolution does not fully reflect this formula. While it clearly demands Israel's withdrawal from the occupied Palestinian territory within 12 months, it falls short of demanding that all relevant actors ensure peace in the region. Madam President, we fully respect the guidance provided by the ICJ in its advisory opinion. The Court stated that it is of the opinion that General Assembly should consider the precise modalities and the further action required to bring to an end the unlawful presence of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory as rapidly as possible. However, concerns remain that certain actions listed in the resolution, such as those in OP-4 and OP-5, are not within the scope of the ICJ advisory opinion. In this regard, we abstained from the resolution. We hope all actions in this assembly will help the realization of the longstanding aspiration of the whole world toward the vision of the two-state solution. Israelis and Palestinians living side by side in peace within secure and recognized borders, free from threats. Thank you, Madam President.
I thank the Republic of Korea and give the floor to Guatemala.
Thank you, Madam President. The Guaidan government voted in favor of the project of Resolution A/ES-10/L31/Rev1 and wants to focus its position on this issue. First, Guatemala reiterates its unconditional support for the Resolution 181-2 of the General Assembly by which the international community decided to establish two states. Guatemala does not depart from this historic posture and, without reservations, declares that Israel and Palestine have the right to live as independent and democratic states that live in peace, within secure and internationally recognized borders. Therefore, this vote is not a variation of our vote from May 10. Second, Guatemala respects the International Court of Justice's and its consultant opinion. It coincides in great degree with my country's approach to Palestinian politics and practices in the Palestinian territory. However, Guatemala does not conceal the fact that there are reservations with some parts of the resolution that we are forced to act accordingly. Third, Guatemala puns all acts of violence and provocation that affect primarily the civilian population. My government is contrary to any act of terrorism, whether it be state or extremist groups. It rejects categorically the selective assassination of people, the suicide attacks, and any act of violence that affects innocent civilians. Fourth, there exists a alternative path to fighting violence and self-perpetuating violence. The parties could choose to return to the direct negotiations under the auspices of the United Nations, with the aim of supervising the application of any agreement that they could reach. Madam President, there is a urgent need to end all indiscriminate aggression and to find a pacific and negotiated way to resolve this long-standing conflict. Thank you.
I thank Guatemala and give the floor to Latvia.
Madam President, today Latvia voted in favor of the Resolution on Advisory Opinion of the International Court of Justice on the Legal Consequences arising from Israel's policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem and from the illegality of Israel's continued presence in the occupied Palestinian territory. Our vote reaffirms the unwavering commitment to international law and support to the International Court of Justice, the principal judicial organ of the United Nations. Latvia considers the Court to be a key institution in the peaceful settlement of disputes, including by advising the General Assembly on legal questions upon request. Consequently, it is in the interests of the international community that advisory opinions provided by the Court are treated with the greatest possible seriousness. This means addressing breaches wherever they occur. It is especially important for smaller countries like my own country, Latvia. Given our history marked by centuries under foreign rule and struggle for independence, we rely on the United Nations Charter and respect for international law to guarantee our sovereignty. Madam President, we condemn in the strongest possible terms Hamas for brutal and indiscriminate attacks across Israel on 7th of October 2023 and call for immediate release of hostages with upper conditions. We also reiterate our recognition of the right of Israel to defend itself in line with the international law and international humanitarian law. The ongoing deadly violence only corroborates the need for political horizon, ensuring lasting peace and security for both Israelis and Palestinians. Ceasefire in Gaza is vital to stop the horrendous civilian suffering and provide humanitarian relief at scale immediately. Today's vote should be interpreted without prejudice to any decision on official recognition of the State of Palestine. Latvia remains committed to a just and comprehensive resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict based on the two-state solution with the State of Israel and an independent, sovereign, democratic, contiguous, and viable State of Palestine living side by side in peace and security and mutual recognition. I thank you.
I thank Latvia and give the floor to India.
The fighting takes place in the backdrop of the ongoing conflict in Gaza. The world has been witnessing this conflict for more than 11 months now. This has resulted in the death of thousands, including women and children. The consequent humanitarian crisis is large in scale. Our position on this conflict has been clear and consistent. We have articulated this several times. We unequivocally condemn the terror attacks on Israel on 7th October 2023. We condemn the laws of civilian lives in the conflict. We call for an immediate ceasefire and immediate and unconditional release of all hostages. And we stand for unrestricted and sustained humanitarian assistance in the Gaza Strip. India's abiding commitment to achieving a just, peaceful, and lasting solution to the Israel-Palestine issue is also known. Madam President, I use the floor to reiterate that only a two-state solution achieved through direct and meaningful negotiations between both sides will lead to enduring peace. Madam President, India has abstained from today's vote. We have been strong advocates of dialogue and diplomacy. We believe that there is no other way to resolve conflicts. There are no winners in conflicts. The cost of conflict is human lives and destruction. India attaches utmost respect to the UN Charter and the principal organs of the United Nations. Our joint effort should be directed towards Our joint effort should be directed towards bringing the two sides closer, not drive them further apart. We should strive towards building bridges, not furthering the divides. I urge the August Assembly to make a genuine effort to strive for peace. In conclusion, I emphasize our steadfast commitment to resolution of the conflict and restoration of peace by bringing human suffering to an end. We will continue to be guided by this spirit. To this end, we stand ready to continue our engagements towards achieving sustained peace. I thank you, Madam President.
I thank India and give the floor to France.
Madame La Présidente, la France est attachée au respect du droit international. Elle réaffirme son plein soutien à la Cour Internationale de Justice. Comme celle-ci l'a indiquée dans son avis consultatif de juillet 2024, la colonisation des territoires palestiniens, y compris à Jérusalem Est, constitue une violation du droit international. Les États sont dans l'obligation de ne pas reconnaître la situation découlant de la présence illicite d'Israël dans les territoires palestiniens occupés. La France ne reconnaîtra pas l'annexion illégale de ces territoires. Elle veille au respect de la résolution 23/34 du Conseil de Sécurité en matière de différenciation, qui vise à matérialiser la distinction entre le territoire d'Israël internationalement reconnu et les territoires occupés depuis 1967. C'est dans cet esprit que la France a voté en faveur du projet de résolution présenté par la Palestine. Nous aurions préféré que celui-ci reprenne exactement l'avis de la Cour Internationale de Justice, mais nous saluons les efforts pour améliorer le projet initial. La France appelle cette assemblée à condamner la violation flagrante du droit international que constituent les attaques terroristes commises le 7 octobre 2023. Elle rappelle sa solidarité avec le peuple israélien et elle réaffirme son attachement indéfectible à la sécurité d'Israël. Madame La Présidente, la poursuite de la colonisation est un obstacle majeur à la solution à deux États. Celle-ci est la seule à même de garantir une paix juste et durable. C'est la seule façon de garantir à long terme la sécurité d'Israël. Cela implique la création d'un État palestinien ainsi qu'une relance des négociations de paix. Il est urgent de parvenir à cesser le feu dans la bande de Gaza. En six ordani et à Jérusalem Est, les actions unilatérales d'Israël doivent cesser. La remise en cause du Stacuco sur l'esplanade des mosquées est dangereuse. Le droit international humanitaire doit être respecté par toutes les parties. Nous appelons à la libération de tous les otages, à un acheminement massif de l'aide et à un accès aux services essentiels pour les populations. Face à la montée des tensions, nous devons tout faire pour éviter un embrasement régional. La France poursuit ses efforts, en ce sens en lien avec ses partenaires. Je vous remercie.
I thank France and I give the floor to Estonia.
President, Estonia voted in favor of draft resolution ES-10/L31/REV1 because of our unwavering commitment to an international law-based multilateral system. It also means compliance with the norms of international law, including the UN Charter by all UN members. We support the International Court of Justice as the main judicial body of the United Nations to ensure compliance with international law and the peaceful settlement of all disputes. We are convinced that relying on international law will help us move towards a two-state solution and ensure both the security of Israel and the future of Palestine. We express our unwavering commitment to Israel's right to self-defense and security in light of the threats from Hamas and our terrorist groups. Israel's legitimate security concerns must be addressed in the process of ending the occupation. To deescalate tensions in the region, we call for immediate and unconditional implementation of Security Council Resolution 27/35, which proposes a comprehensive, free-paced ceasefire deal to end the war in Gaza and release the hostages. I thank you.
I thank Estonia and give the floor to Switzerland.
Merci, Madame La Présidente. L'avis de la Cour Internationale de Justice reflète les règles et les obligations des parties au conflit, notamment le droit international humanitaire. Le soutien de la Suisse à la CIG est indéfectible. Gardienne du droit international, y compris du droit international humanitaire, la Cour est une composante essentielle de l'ordre juridique global et dans la résolution pacifique des différents. La Suisse a contribué à l'avis consultatif de la CIG du 19 juillet dernier lors de la procédure consultative et soutient l'avis consultatif. L'illégalité de l'occupation israélienne du territoire palestinien qui court depuis 1967 ne fait maintenant aucun doute. Elle doit cesser et un horizon politique doit être rétabli. La Suisse a cependant constaté que certains points vont clairement au-delà de l'avis consultatif. Ceci concerne notamment le délai de douze mois pour le retrait d'Israël du territoire palestinien occupé, sans mentionner la manière de garantir la sécurité d'Israël, ainsi que le point en lien avec les sanctions. Ce constat motive notre abstention. Notre abstention n'ébranle en rien notre engagement à respecter et faire respecter le droit international humanitaire dans l'ensemble du territoire palestinien occupé, conformément à l'article 1 commun ou Convention de Genève. En tant qu'État dépositaire de ces conventions, la Suisse exécutera le mandat que la résolution lui confie en organisant une conférence de haute partie contractante dans les six mois. Nous réaffirmons ici que le respect du droit international et la protection des civils sont des priorités absolues. Cela comprend tout aussi bien la fin de la violence des colons que la fin des actes de terreur comme ceux du 7 octobre. À Gaza, il faut un cessez-le-feu. Un accès humanitaire sûr, rapide et sans entraves est la libération des otages. Il est urgent de relancer un processus de paix en vue de réaliser la solution à deux États : Israël et la Palestine vivant côte à côte en paix, à l'intérieur de frontières sure et reconnues, solution à laquelle la Suisse reste profondément attachée. Je vous remercie.
I thank Switzerland and give the floor to Cyprus.
Madam President, we voted yes on this resolution based on a consistent point of principle. Cyprus supports the International Court of Justice to give advisory opinions on important legal questions referred to the United Nations. The role of the ICJ is paramount in the rules-based system, as is respecting the Court's decisions and advisory opinions. Notwithstanding this point of principle, we wish to also make the following points: The resolution includes language and provisions that do not strictly fall within the scope of the July 2024 advisory opinion, and it does not fully cover the international context. We unequivocably condemn in the strongest of terms the heinous terrorist attacks by Hamas on 7th of October 2023 and its deplorable conduct towards hostages. Cyprus fully supports the ongoing mediation efforts by the United States, Egypt, and Qatar and reiterate its call for an immediate ceasefire, the release of all the hostages, and the search for humanitarian assistance into Gaza as the pathway towards long-term peace. Ultimately, Madam President, the only sustainable way forward that meets the security concerns and needs of the legitimate stakeholders is reviving the Middle East peace process on the basis of a two-state solution and in line with the UN resolutions. We stand ready to support this aim, as it is the sole way to ensure conditions of sustainable security and stability equally for Israelis and Palestinians alike, and it is a crucial step towards fostering stability in the Middle East as a whole. I thank you.
I thank Cyprus and give the floor to Monaco.
Merci, Madame La Présidente. Monaco s'est prononcé en faveur du projet de résolution contenu dans le document A/ES-10/L31/REV1. Ce faisant, Monaco reconnaît le rôle de la Cour Internationale de Justice, organe judiciaire principal de l'ONU. Le vote de Monaco en faveur de cette résolution est une décision juridique et non politique. C'est une décision circonstanciée, dictée par une situation particulière. Ma délégation réaffirme son soutien au respect du droit international et du droit international humanitaire, socle fondamental des relations internationales. Nous sommes profondément préoccupés par la situation humanitaire catastrophique à Gaza. Mais nous condamnons le terrorisme, condamnons les attaques du 7 octobre perpétrées par le Hamas et d'autres groupes terroristes, et appelons à la libération immédiate et inconditionnelle des otages. Nous réitérons aussi le droit d'Israël à se défendre. En s'exprimant en faveur de cette résolution, Monaco renouvelle son attachement au multilatéralisme et aux buts et principes de la Charte des Nations Unies. Je vous remercie.
I thank Monaco and give the floor to Sweden.
Thank you, Madam President. Sweden firmly supports the International Court of Justice as the principal judicial organ of the United Nations and fully respects its independence and the functions assigned to it under the Charter of the United Nations and its statute. Sweden has taken note of the Court's important advisory opinion on the legal consequences arising from the policies and practices of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, rendered on 19th July 2024. While not legally binding in itself, we regard it as an authoritative interpretation on important elements of international law. On several important issues, the Court's findings coincide with what is already the joint position of the European Union. The EU has stated that it will not recognize changes to the 1967 borders unless agreed by the parties. The EU has, based on international law and Security Council resolutions, for many years supported a lasting and sustainable peace on the basis of a negotiated two-state solution with Israel and Palestine living side by side in peace, security, and mutual recognition. Sweden reiterates its firm position that international law must be respected by all parties at all times, including Israel and Palestine. Civilians must be protected and humanitarian assistance must be allowed to reach those in need. Although the advisory opinion does not deal with the situation on and after October 7 in Israel and Gaza, the EU, including Sweden, stand firm in our call for an immediate humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza to alleviate suffering of civilians, allow for a massive scale-up of humanitarian assistance, and secure the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages. In response to the attacks against Israel by Hamas and other groups on and after October 7, the EU has reaffirmed its support for Israel's right to defend itself. The war that now rages has made a two-state solution all the more urgent, and it should be clear to everyone that a Hamas-ruled Gaza cannot be part of a solution. For example, the International Court did not set a deadline for the implementation of its opinion. In this regard, Sweden believes that it would have been better if the resolution before us had provided more time for the parties to discuss and identify the modalities for follow-up to the Court's advisory opinion to ensure that the measures adopted are conducive to resume negotiations in order to achieve a two-state solution. For these reasons, Sweden abstained in the vote on the resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
I thank Sweden and I give the floor to Italy.
Madam President, Italy abstained in the voting on draft resolution A/ES-10/L31/REV1. We fully recognize the consultative competence of the International Court of Justice to make legal determinations on matters of international law with regard to questions posed to it by the General Assembly. Our abstention in no way represents a challenge to the authority of the Court. At the same time, while recognizing the improvements that the approved draft contains as compared to the first draft circulated by the State of Palestine, the resolution still goes beyond in some respects the determinations of the Court, such as, for example, the imposition of sanctions and the indication of strict deadlines for the withdrawal of Israel's presence in the OPTs. But in general, in order for the Court's legal determinations to be implemented on the ground, we must create the conditions under which such implementation becomes possible and real. Let us not forget that the need to create the conditions for the respect of international law is stated in the very preamble of the Charter, and it is one of the key functions of the United Nations. We believe that for the international community and for the UN, there is no shortcut to a two-state negotiated solution, in which both Israel and Palestine and their people live side by side in full security within mutually agreed, recognized borders, in line with the relevant Security Council's resolutions and international law. Given these considerations, Italy firmly believes that all efforts must now focus on facilitating renewed negotiations between Israel and the Palestine Authority, aimed at rebuilding trust and fostering dialogue. These are the key parties responsible for driving the peace process forward. The international community must remain steadfast in supporting this effort with a clear objective of achieving a political and security framework that will bring a lasting end to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict and lay down a viable roadmap towards a two-state solution. There is no more urgent moment than now; indeed, we are already behind. Italy stands ready to take concrete steps and dedicate its resources to ensuring that the two-state solution evolves from a longstanding aspiration into a practical and achievable outcome. I thank you.
I thank Italy and give the floor to Germany.
Madam President, I have the honor to speak on behalf of Germany. Today's meeting is about the right of the Palestinian people to live in their own state, in dignity, and in recognition of the State of Israel. Germany has fought for the two-state solution for very long. We have repeatedly condemned that the prospects of a two-state solution are being undermined by the expansion of Israeli settlements in the occupied Palestinian territories and the violence perpetrated by radical Israeli settlers. The ICJ advisory opinion addresses this. The ICJ stated that the State of Israel's continued presence in the occupied Palestinian territory is unlawful and that Israel is under an obligation to bring it to an end as rapidly as possible. It clearly calls on the United Nations and its members to not recognize the status quo and to consider modalities and further action to bring an end to it. This is a very far-reaching task that we must take very seriously. We therefore regret the narrow timeframe between the presentation of the draft resolution and its adoption today. We would also have wished that the resolution followed the conclusions of the ICJ more closely. Unfortunately, the resolution goes beyond the scope of the advisory opinion in several points. Instead of setting unrealistic timeframes, it would have been advisable to emphasize more strongly that the parties need to resolve their differences through direct talks. The resolution also fails to spell out that the ICJ's advisory opinion does not cover events after October 7, 2023, the brutal terror attack carried out by Hamas, the taking of hostages, and the Israeli response since then. It should in no way undermine ongoing diplomatic efforts. We disagree with provisions that do not acknowledge the right of Israel to ensure its security and the safety of its population. The ICJ did not limit this right in any way in its advisory opinion. We regret that the resolution blurs the lines between this advisory opinion and other legal procedures addressing the situation in Gaza. Madam President, the resolution has been adopted today. For the reasons outlined, Germany abstained. Let there be no doubt that we respect the ICJ's advisory opinion, that we will act in line with the obligations of international law set out in it, and that we are ready to assist in its implementation in its entirety to achieve justice and lasting peace and security for both Israelis and Palestinians. We don't always agree amongst us. Here at the United Nations, we come together to seek solutions. International law is what unites us. International law is what unites us. It is the cornerstone of our international order and must be respected. When it is not, peace and security will not prevail. Our position on the Middle East is clear. The only way to reach a lasting and comprehensive peace is a negotiated two-state solution. The only way to get there is through direct negotiations between the two parties. I thank you, Madam President.
I thank Germany and give the floor to Kiribati.
Madam President, Kiribati abstained on resolution A/ES-10/L31/REV1 in line with our longstanding stance on this longstanding Israeli-Palestinian conflict. The following lays out our rationale for abstaining. Madam President, while we fully respect and honor the ICJ's findings, advisory opinion and recommendations to the Security Council and the General Assembly with respect to the current Israeli-Palestinian conflict and while we fully support the admission of Palestine as soon as possible to the full membership of the United Nations and the two-state solution to the conflict that has been agreed, Kiribati is of the view that lasting peace between Israel and Palestine cannot be realized by simply turning the advisory opinion and recommendations into a court order as attempted by the resolution, requiring only one party to the conflict to play its part without requiring the other party to play its part as well. Peace between two conflicting parties can only be achieved if the two parties can come together genuinely ready to forgive and forget the wrongs of the past and move forward with a new sense of friendship, cooperation and good neighborliness. My delegation hopes to see the two-state solution being implemented by the Security Council and the General Assembly as quickly as possible using the mechanisms articulated under the Pacific Settlement of Dispute enshrined under Chapter 6 of the Charter of the United Nations. Mr. President, the Israeli-Palestinian conflict remains a significant challenge for global peace and security. Kiribati firmly believes that a sustainable and just resolution can only be achieved through the framework of a two-state solution where Israel and Palestine can coexist peacefully within secure and recognized borders. Kiribati is mindful of the complexities and sensitivities that accompany this longstanding conflict. As a small island nation, believing so much in peace and we're a very peaceful nation, we value peace, dialogue and respect for international law. While recognizing the importance of these legal principles, Kiribati has also taken a balanced approach in this matter while we continue to search for a full understanding of this long and complex conflict with roots and causes stretching back to the days the Arab world was ruled by colonial powers, empires. We have opted to abstain from recent votes in the General Assembly on resolution related to this conflict. Our abstention reflects our belief that both parties must come to the table in a spirit of compromise and mutual respect. We remain hopeful that diplomatic efforts guided by the Charter, international law and principle of justice can eventually lead to a resolution that benefits both peoples and promotes lasting peace in the region. Madam President, in closing, Kiribati reaffirms its commitment to the two-state solution and calls on the international community to support efforts towards a peaceful and just settlement of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. We believe that the sooner the two-state solution is progressed and implemented, the sooner lasting peace and happiness can become a living human reality for the peoples of Israel and the peoples of Palestine and for the peoples of the Middle East. I thank you.
I thank Kiribati. Now I give the floor to Ecuador.
Gracias, señora presidenta. Hace 24 años, en septiembre del 2000, los Estados miembros de esta organización adoptamos la declaración del milenio en la que colectivamente decidimos, y cito: "consolidar el respeto del imperio de la ley en los asuntos internacionales y nacionales y en particular velar porque los Estados miembros cumplan las decisiones de la Corte Internacional de Justicia con arreglo a la carta de las Naciones Unidas en los listigios en que sean partes". El pasado 19 de julio, la Corte Internacional de Justicia, por solicitud de esta asamblea, emitió una opinión consultiva sobre las consecuencias jurídicas de las políticas y prácticas de Israel en el territorio palestino ocupado, que si bien no es un dictamen de obligatorio cumplimiento, representa un criterio que contribuye precisamente a consolidar el respeto al imperio de la ley en los asuntos internacionales. La Corte ha estimado que corresponde, entre otras instancias, a esta misma asamblea el establecer las modalidades precisas para poner fin a la presencia de Israel en el territorio palestino ocupado, así como estudiar qué nuevas medidas fueran necesarias para el efecto. Así lo ha hecho la asamblea al considerar un texto propuesto por el Estado de Palestina que recoge en gran medida lo señalado por la Corte en su opinión consultiva y propone nuevas medidas. El Ecuador, tal como se comprometió a hacerlo hace 24 años, realiza todos los esfuerzos para consolidar el respeto al derecho internacional y promover la solución pacífica de las controversias y, en consecuencia, respalda y respeta las decisiones y opiniones de la Corte Internacional de Justicia. Señora presidenta, el Ecuador comparte el criterio de la Corte de que la realización del derecho del pueblo palestino a la autodeterminación, incluido su derecho a un estado independiente y soberano que convive en paz con el Estado de Israel dentro de las fronteras seguras y reconocidas para ambos Estados, tal como se contempla en las resoluciones del Consejo de Seguridad de la Asamblea General, contribuirá a la estabilidad regional y a la seguridad de todos los Estados de Oriente Medio. Nuestras acciones y decisiones deben procurar acercarnos efectiva y eficazmente a ese objetivo. Es por ello que, aún antes de que la Corte emita su opinión consultiva, el Ecuador con sus votos, tanto en el Consejo de Seguridad como en esta asamblea, ha mantenido su posición histórica a favor de la solución viestatal. De igual manera, el Ecuador invariablemente ha condenado los actos terroristas perpetrados por Hamas el 7 de octubre del 2023 y ha demandado la liberación inmediata e incondicional de todos los rehenes, como lo vuelve a hacer en esta oportunidad. En esta ocasión, son las nuevas medidas propuestas, que no forman parte de la opinión de la Corte, las que se han decidido con el voto sobre el proyecto y la resolución. En particular, para el Ecuador, el plazo contenido en el párrafo operativo 2 es artificial. Por este motivo, el Ecuador ha votado en abstención al tiempo que reafirma su respaldo a una solución política, pacífica y justa basada en la coexistencia de dos Estados dentro de las fronteras de 1967 conforme a las resoluciones pertinentes y a la Carta de la ONU. Finalmente, el Ecuador considera que el momento actual corresponde a promover el diálogo y la negociación. Con el fin de garantizar estabilidad, seguridad y bienestar tanto para palestinos como israelíes, debemos evitar cualquier acción que se aleje o que aleje la posibilidad de una solución al conflicto. Muchas gracias.
I thank Ecuador. We have heard the last speaker in explanation of vote after the vote for this meeting. We shall hear the remaining speakers in explanation of vote after the vote this afternoon at 3 p.m. in this hall to be followed by the resumption of the debate on agenda item 5. The meeting is adjourned.